Welcome to the school committee meeting of August 14, 2025. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. All school committee members are in person, though Dr. Cabral and some of our guests will be participating remotely. This meeting is open to the public and will be broadcast by ECAT. If any members of the public here in person wish to make a comment during the public comment period, you will be invited to do so, and we ask that you state your name and address for the record. So the first item on the agenda is the Easton 300 Tricentennial information. We have Mr. Dave Clifton here from the Tricentennial Committee. Mr. Clifton, do you want to say a few words?
I did want to, first of all, thank you for including me on the agenda. And I know that I'm going to try to be brief tonight because there's so much that I could talk about. This has been a magic year, 2025. We have a theme of bringing families and community together, and I think it's happening. I go way back to January of 2025, and I go back even further when the Select Board appointed a Tricentennial Committee. That was in December of 2022. Our first meeting was in January of 2023. And I know that we sat there at a meeting, 10 of us, thinking about what are we going to do? When are we going to do it? How's it going to come out? How are we going to raise funds for it? And what kinds of events and activities can we put together to celebrate the history of the town of Easton, Massachusetts? And I'll tell you, I'm happy in terms of sharing it. It's been an honor for me. And I say to the school committee and also to Dr. Cabral, thank you so much for stepping in to get involved. We appreciate the opportunity we've had to use the school facilities. And I think of going back to June 14, when we had a community picnic, we had a concert, we had a salute to the military and the veterans in the community. We even had a flyover, and we finished it off with fireworks, which, having seen and organized fireworks for years in other towns, I thought they were terrific, three finales. Some people left two different times. They thought it was over. But this celebration has been terrific. We've been able to not only get sponsors for all the events, we've been very fortunate for getting volunteers, people in the community willing to share their time, their talent, their ideas, their resources, to help make this dream come true. And that dream is to bring the community together to celebrate in a positive way. And I've had so many different people approaching me, and I tell them to share it with their neighbors, saying things like, what a great place it is to live in a town like Easton. It's not just the education, it's the public safety, it's the open leisure activities, the open space, the recreation, and the list goes on and on of how this community comes together with lots of top-notch department heads that step up to do the best they can. A special thank you from myself and the committee to Craig Davidson, who's been attending our meetings, representing the superintendent and the school department. And I got to tell you, between all the department heads and the volunteers, and there's hundreds now, can you imagine? We started off with 10, then we went to 40, and then 50, and then people started calling, getting involved to have over 100 people in the community. And all of the events have been well-attended. And having done some of this before in the past, I can see the smiles on people's faces, activities and events for people of all ages. And it's not over yet, folks. Some people thought that the parade was the finish. What a terrific parade to see the community spirit and to see all the organizations and to know and realize that we can pay all the bills. We have not tackled the town budgets, and I emphasize that wherever I go because I know there's been some discussion out there about us using town funds. We raised it, thanks to all the sponsors, and we continue to ask people to contribute to the cause. Our next, we got six events left. We got three signature events, and we also have three partnership events. Our very next event is coming up on Saturday. And on Saturday, we have an Easter night at the Brockton Rocks. That's at Campagnelli Stadium. It's going to be a doubleheader followed by fireworks. Eastern Select Board Chair and Vice Chair and the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Tricentennial Committee will throw out a first pitch. I want you to know I have been practicing. I probably still won't throw a strike, but I'll try my best to do so. So I wanted to say that the Select Board are hoping to be able to bring the community together and to celebrate a community that's rich in history. All you have to do, folks, is to walk down Main Street in Northeastern, and you can see all the historic buildings. And when we presented over 300 blankets to the graduating class of 2025 here at Oliver Ames High School, we did likewise for the seniors at Southeast Regional Vocation and even the students that attend private or propeal schools. We have been blessed with superintendents that have opened up the door for us to do what we can to celebrate with the community. Some families have said, gee, I spend a lot of time at work, both parents are working, but we're taking time out with this celebration. Even on times when we've had rain, scary times, we still had terrific crowds. People came from everywhere. We have 3,000 tickets out there for the Brockton Rocks game. We're going to hang a flag. I would like to present this flag. I was going to combine the sentiment of the school committee. This is a theme logo flag that we'd like to present to the Assistant Superintendent, and she could make sure it gets on someplace. And of course, you don't have to worry about people in town knowing about this celebration. It's all over town.
Oh, that's awesome.
We also know that we had their permission to make a donation to the school department. We'd like to donate, having discussions with the athletic director, an American flag, five by eight, that you can hang at the Val Mouscato Stadium. And we'd like to do that. Having looked at the flag, we thought it was a little small for that area, and we're eager, folks here at the school department, we'll make sure that you get that as a little thanks of appreciation.
Thank you.
And our committee, as I try to be brief because I know you've got a pretty long, extensive agenda, I did want to say that when you think about the history of this town, and even the high school named after a governor, Oliver Ames, and when you see the people in town, how they show up at these events, and they bring their families, and they bring their grandmothers and their grandfathers, and I know that the grandmothers and grandfathers are looking at these blankets, so we're thinking about something that we can do for the senior adults in the community as well. We have a block party that's coming up, and that is scheduled at the Governor Ames Estate. It's scheduled on September 6. We have a bike race that's scheduled on the school complex, and that is scheduled on Sunday. So it'll be a busy weekend for the Tricentennial Committee, no doubt about it. And we even have committee members that have smiles on their faces because they like the idea of bringing the town of Easton, Massachusetts together. And I got to tell you that there's a lot more that's going to be happening. We have a bonfire. We not only thank the school department and the superintendent and the school officials for making the property available. You could see the fireworks in the sky with the background. It just worked out perfectly. And the fire chief coordinated that, and I thought it'd come out terrific. But we have a bonfire coming up, and that is scheduled for October 11. It's going to be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The bonfire gets built and will go off at 7:00 p.m. There'll be two major bands at a concert, and we have a free barbecue for all the folks in town that join us. There aren't too many barbecues that are free. We certainly thank the Roach Brothers for their timely contributions. You can't do a barbecue without having people to do it. So we involved the Lions Club, a group that has a theme we serve, and they certainly do that here in the town. We also have a car show at Borland State Park, and I think we've been blessed with the opportunity to use all of the town facilities and not just the schools, but all the other facilities in town and kind of spread it out. And one of the things I did want to mention to you before I wrap it up, we are going to have an anniversary book.
Oh, great.
It'll be here for years to come. Right now, we already have 140 pages in the anniversary book. And I think everybody in town is going to be in the book, so I'm not worrying about who's going to buy one. But I think the most important thing that all of us understand, especially if you're working in municipalities, that this is a community that cares. It's a community that cares. It's a community that comes together during crisis mode. And sometimes there may be things out there that sound negative, but you work around them, and you come up with something positive. And I think I say that to our Tricentennial Committee. And I know that we got people who have done above and beyond the call of duty. Believe it or not, I've had 80-plus meetings since we started. Can you imagine joining a committee and someone saying, and we didn't say it, if we had any meetings, we wouldn't have too many meetings. The fact is that I appreciate everything that's been done. I can't possibly talk about everything that's going on in the celebration. It's online, and of course, it's easton.org, easton300.org, and you'll get all the details of our celebration. We hope that the theme of bringing families and community together will reach beyond the year 2025. At the block party, we're going to be opening up the time capsule. We were smart. The time capsule from 2:50 was not buried. It was put in a vault at the Bank of Easton.
Oh, wow.
So we know where it is. There's some communities out there that are still looking for their time vault before they bury it. But the fact is, we're not only going to do that on October 6. I'm sorry, I got a lot of dates in my mind.
I'm sure.
September 6, at 3 o'clock, we're going to have a police escort from the Bank of Easton to the site, the Governor Ames Estate, to open it up. And it's hundreds of things in that box. And then we're going to probably not bury, but put back in another vault, all the information that's happened during the year 2025. I'm sorry, I don't think I'll be at the 350th anniversary, but my heart will always be there, and especially here in the town of Easton. Now, I know Dale Karister, I'm not sure if he called in, he's my Vice Chair, but he sends his gratitude to the school committee as well. And I hope that you folks will join us. We have a baseball game coming up, and of course, the Brockton Rocks and their own has opened up the door for us, and he said, Dave, whatever you want to do. We're going to be hanging our flag. We're going to have posters and signs all over the stadium. And the tickets are free to anyone that's a Sharon resident, and I made sure that they included people who do not live in Easton but work in Easton, so they're included as well. So it's free. The only people that will be paying to go will be the people from other towns. So with that, I say thank you so much for the opportunity to spread the good word and to thank you so much for the good work that you folks do, and especially the school getting the word out to all the parents of students. That helped bring crowds to our participation. And again, thank you so much, and thank you all to the community for giving me the honor and privilege of sharing with Senate and Senate Committee hundreds of volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add, Chair Wiseman, that Mr. Clifton is always wonderful to work with, and it is always humbling, but not surprising, how the community comes together for, in times of need and times of celebration. And this is clearly an example of that, an extraordinary example of that. Mr. Clifton and Dale's efforts are just unbelievable, and I have to admit, in the beginning, when he was describing a lot of the things that were going to take place, I thought, wow, that's really ambitious. It'll be great if those things can come to fruition. And it's only grown since the initial vision that they shared. It's just so impressive, shows the love that the community has for one another, for the children of the community, for the past and the future of the community. And we're so grateful to have even played a small role in it. And so thank you for including us, and thank you for all that you've done. This has been a really exciting year, and as you said, it is not over yet.
The events have been amazing, and it's, I know they have been very well-attended, and I think everyone in the community is so grateful to you and your committee for everything you've done. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I cannot stay for dinner.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion and possible vote on solar lease agreement for Blanche Ames Elementary School. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. As a brief point of context, we have Beth Greenblatt here this evening from Select, who has been working with us tirelessly to help us bring our vision of more solar arrays and savings to the district and to ultimately the town. We, as many people know, we have solar arrays on both the middle school and the high school. And when Blanche Ames Elementary School was built, it was built to be solar-ready. There are a tremendous amount of people who work together to bring this to fruition. Ms. Greenblatt will do a much better job than I at explaining all of this. I know she's got a presentation for you, and so I prefer not to get in the way of that. I'll let her provide the information. You obviously can ask any questions. We do what we're ultimately looking for, don't want to bury the lead. What we're ultimately looking for is for the school committee to approve leasing the roof areas for the actual solar arrays for this project and recommending to the Select Board that we move forward. They have a meeting coming up on the 18th for a purchase agreement. But again, I will let Beth take over with her presentation, answer questions. If there's anything I can add in from the school side, of course, I'm happy to do that. So I thank her for being here this evening, and I will turn it right over to you, Beth, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. My name is Beth Greenblatt. I'm from Beacon Integrated Solutions. And also Byron Woodman from Select Energy, who's the vendor who will build and own the asset, is also here, beamed into the audience. But I wanted to take a few minutes, and I will bring up a brief presentation just to give you some background. But for those of you who don't know me, I've supported the town over many, many years through various energy efficiency programs undertaken by Amoresco on behalf of the town and the schools, and also to a solar project on your middle school and your high school. And so this is an exciting opportunity for me to see more solar in the town of Easton. And I have some fun statistics to share, which should give everyone really an advanced sense of pride beyond that which you've recently heard about Easton Tricentennial Celebration. So with that, I am going to share, and just want to make sure, can everybody see this?
Not yet.
No.
Might be loading.
They can see it online.
Yes, they can see it online, but not We can't see it here. In here.
It says I'm screen sharing.
Yeah, you're good.
Oh, so you can see, awesome. Perfect, perfect. Great, thank you. So with that initial introduction, I just want to sort of give you a little bit of background. Beacon was engaged by the town to seek some competitive offers and pricing for a comprehensive solar PV array to be installed on the top of the school, as it's actually in its final stages of construction, under a third-party ownership arrangement, which means the school department would lease the surface of its roof to a third party, in this case, it's Select Energy, to design, build, own, and operate a solar array and sell all of the generation from the solar array to the school directly, right into the building. We sought competitive pricing from two firms. We sought competitive pricing from Amoresco, which is the firm that owns the solar arrays on the roofs of the middle school and the Oliver Ames High School, and also with Select Energy, the firm that was selected through a comprehensive competitive procurement undertaken by power options as authorized under Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 137. And Select Energy, I'm pleased to say, was able to provide not only the most comprehensive solution, but quite frankly, the most competitive solution to design, build, own, and operate an array, and has been working with us tirelessly to develop and define a project, a solar project, that worked for the school, but also was formidable by National Grid. I want to give you a couple of different reference definitions, because when you think about solar energy attached to a building, feeding behind your building meter, there's a variety of different ways that you're realizing benefits. On the one hand, you're realizing immediate benefits, what I call is avoided costs. For every kilowatt hour of electricity that you buy from the sun, you're no longer buying that from the grid. And so you're avoiding what you're buying from the grid, but instead, you're buying from the sun. In this case, you'll be buying some from the grid and some from the sun. And that which you're buying from the sun through Select Energy is at a much lower cost than what you otherwise would be buying from the grid. The avoided cost components are not only the actual electrons, the electricity, but the delivery charges that come to the building, whereas the solar is feeding right into your building. Another potential benefit, which we don't really expect given the size of the system, but another potential benefit would be what's called on-bill, alternative on-bill credits. And many of you know that the town has engaged, and specifically with the middle school and the high school, where you're getting financial credits that are being applied to your bills, and you're sharing that economic value with the owner of the asset. In this case, I don't expect that we're going to be exporting any kilowatt hours to the grid, to National Grid, because the project has been sized to optimize the balance between what the building is using and what we're able to produce with solar. For every kilowatt hour that's generated by the solar array, the school department would pay, or the town would pay, Select Energy for every kilowatt hour at a fixed rate for 20 years. And as we all know, there isn't a lot of 20-year fixed rates around, so this is a really good hedge against future risk of cost of increase for electricity. The solar array has been designed in what we the meter solution. Basically, it's backfeeding your building, going right into the building, and spinning the meter back, right? So the meter is capturing that which National Grid is feeding to the building, and the solar is coming in on the back end, and the solar is basically negating that which otherwise would be coming from the grid. In terms of project specifics, as I mentioned, Select Energy, their design optimizes the available roof space. There were some areas of the roof we needed to stay off of for structural reasons and some other reasons, and to provide adequate space and adequate resources to get to the other existing equipment on the roof in times of repair or for other purposes. The capacity of the system, so the modules are going to produce energy, about 270 kW, and you're going to get about 220 kW of actual AC plug-in energy into the building. The estimated first-year generation is about 341,000 kW, which represents about half of what the building needs on an annual basis. So it's offsetting about 48%, 49% of the total building requirements for this building. In terms of the sort of economic findings, the relationship would be a 20-year deal. Again, as I mentioned, the building uses about 715, give or take 715,000 kW, and this will represent about half, or 48% of the building requirements will be met by solar, and the rest you'll buy from the grid. A very small percentage may be net metered, again, because it's sort of an instantaneous thing over the year, but for the most part, about 91% of the usage of the solar generated will be used in the building, and maybe even more. Select is offering a power purchase rate of 7.7 cents, which candidly is less than what the town is currently paying, and the school is currently paying for just the supply portion of your overall electricity cost. So it's a really terrific hedge for 50% of this building for future energy costs, will help you better manage your operating costs by this investment, which is invested by Select, in solar energy. The overall estimated benefits over the 20-year period, so it's a big number because it's over 20 years, is a little under 1.3 million, and you're going to pay about a half a million dollars to Select over that period. The estimated net afterwards, so the net benefit for savings to the community after paying Select is about $780,000 over the 20-year period, or just under $40,000 a year in savings to your budget, to your bottom line. This graphic is to give you a sort of a perspective on the design of the system. Again, there were some areas that we stayed off of for structural reasons and areas that we stayed off of for operational efficiency and other performance-based reasons. But for the most part, it's a pretty heavy coverage of solar on the building. In terms of the next steps, the commercial contracting, we have been working diligently by we, I mean, the town administrator, superintendent, town council, myself, and Byron Woodman and his team at Select Energy, to negotiate two different agreements, very similar to what was negotiated for the middle school and the high school. There is a lease agreement, and there is a power purchase agreement. Similar to the structure and relationship of the contracting vehicles, the school committee approved and executed the lease agreement, and the Select Board, as the entity that buys electricity on behalf of the community in general, the Select Board will execute the power purchase agreement on behalf of the school. Under this long-term lease agreement, Select will lease the portion of the roof surface for the exclusive development of a solar photovoltaic system. They're not going to do anything else on the roof except for to install this designed improved system. And then, under the long-term power purchase agreement, the school will purchase 100% of the solar generated from the system by Select Energy. Just a review of Just to review a couple of the provisions from each of the two agreements to give you a sense of that, the lease provision includes limited and defined access rights. So there isn't a worry that there is undefined access to the building's required requirements, or of course, a key component of the agreements. There's protections for safety, reliability, and performance. There are protections for the roof warranty to make sure and ensure that the existing warranties are not void and will remain in full effect after the installation of the system and when it's removed. The term of the lease is 20 years. The power purchase agreement has very specific provisions as well. There's a fixed, as I mentioned, rate of electricity of 7.7 cents a kilowatt hour delivered for 20 years. Provisions for emergencies and repairs. There's a performance guarantee of 85% of the estimated annual solar-generated electricity. There's also a right to purchase the system if the school or the town wanted to purchase the system out from Select in very specific defined years that are tied to key milestones. And the term of that agreement, it's a coterminous agreement for 20 years. A preliminary construction schedule, as all construction schedules always have an asterisk next to them, and the asterisk is obviously, the schedule is really subject to materials availability and lead time, weather conditions, and specifically utility into connection. But Select was comfortable sharing a preliminary schedule. They're anxious to start construction in early October. They will coordinate with the school department to get the equipment up on the roof at a time that is convenient and works for the school department, and ensures the safety of students and faculty and staff. They will load the equipment onto the roof in late, they're expecting late October of 2025, and barring any weird weather conditions, they're hoping to be able to install the array by the end of December 2025. And again, waiting for the utility to do their magic to allow the system to be turned on, we're conservatively saying that the system will start fitting the meter, if you will, sometime between January and March of 2026. And so, in terms of next steps in the ask here, as Dr. Cabral had mentioned, we are asking for a school committee vote to proceed with the project, approve entering into a 20-year lease agreement, and recommend to the Select Board to enter into a 20-year power purchase agreement with Select Energy. And we're hoping, for efficiency purposes, for you to authorize either the school committee chair or the superintendent to execute the lease agreement, of course, subject to town council approval as to the final agreements. We will also recommend on Monday to the Select Board that they vote to enter into a 20-year power purchase agreement with the, you know, and accept the recommendation of the school committee, and also to authorize the Select Board Chair or the town administrator to execute the power purchase agreement, subject, of course, to town council approval as to form and content. So Administrator Reed was very, very excited to share sort of an important statistic, and I think it's one that the community should be very proud of. Easton has demonstrated its commitment to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions, and specifically to solar energy development, not only locally within the town of Easton, but also throughout the Commonwealth. And to that end, has contracted with owners and solar developers in Easton and in neighboring communities, and including this array at Blanche Ames. The total commitment to solar projects in the Commonwealth, again, locally and in your neighborhood, if you will, represents approximately 79% of the total annual electricity requirement for all town and school properties, which is really very impressive and something the town should feel very proud of. So with that, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I am happy to entertain questions. I can stop sharing unless folks want me to bring up a slide that I spun through quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Greenblatt. Questions from committee members?
I have a sort of basic question. So is your role as the owner's project manager, is that where your role is in this? Okay.
Yes, yes. I've been engaged by the town and sitting on the town side of the project, representing your interests, your concerns, and working with Select to develop a project that optimizes and meets your needs.
And as Beth noted earlier, it's been a longtime relationship between all of the projects that we've worked together, and she's, as you can hear, extremely knowledgeable and very valuable to us. We had many questions, as I'm sure you can imagine. I'll let you ask your questions, but of course, if there's anything that we asked or that we were able to get information on that I think is of interest to you and you aren't asking tonight, I'll make sure I bring those up as well.
Go ahead.
My second question is, I imagine that this isn't going to be installed in the middle of the night, so how much visible interruption is it to the, obviously, the kids and staff in the school, but obviously, the cars in the parking lot and all of, everything surrounding?
The entire drop-off process?
Yeah, drop-off, pickup, everything, yeah.
That's a great question. So Select is going to work around your schedule, right, the school's schedule? And in the big sort of piece of it, and Byron, if you need to team in, and I'm sure the superintendent will, you know, allow you in, but the big piece of it is to get the equipment up on the roof. And once the equipment is up on the roof, the modules will be set, the electricians will be busy wiring things together, and they'll really be out of sight because they'll be up on the roof. So it's the initial delivery of the equipment and getting it up on the roof, and then after that, it's barely noticeable.
So if you're inside a classroom that is right underneath the roof, you wouldn't hear, like if you're on the second floor, you wouldn't hear them drilling and, no? Okay.
The system's going to be ballasted, so it's not going to be, you know, there may be some minor fastening, but the system's going to be ballasted, so it's a relatively quiet installation. To the extent they need to do anything that may cause some disturbance, they'll work with the principal and the superintendent to ensure that they're coordinating with any other activities that may be going on in the building.
Thank you.
The biggest disruption that we were sort of able to identify was when the materials are actually delivered. There will obviously be a crane there, and we are going to coordinate a certain area of parking spaces or areas adjacent to the school where the material can be hoisted onto the roof. And then, as Beth said, once it's on the roof, they put it all there at once. And then, once it's on the roof, then the work is exclusively on the roof. And Byron is here, and I don't have the permission to add him, but of course, if he would like to add any information, if Mrs. Pruitt can put him through or add anything to the chat, we're sure, we should have.
I just.
Thank you, that's good. But of course, that was a consideration. We don't want a disruption to the day, but certainly not the traffic pattern either. So we're going to have to work closely once we find out when the materials are going to be available, but those are, those are things that we can't exactly plan right now, because we don't know the exact date that it's coming, we don't know exactly the square footage that it will take, but we are aware that that is necessary. We've been told it's going to be a short amount of time that it takes to get it actually onto the roof. They're incentivized to get it on the roof as well, because then they can begin the installation, and so will mitigate the disruption as much as we possibly can.
So I do remember when we were going through the planning process for Blanche Ames, how we wanted to make sure that the roof was solar-ready, so it's exciting that this is actually happening now. My question is around the maintenance, the maintenance of the solar panels and the maintenance of the roof. How does that work? Who's doing it?
So the roof, as the roof would normally be, is the responsibility, obviously, of the school. In terms of if there's any damage that's caused, obviously, as a result of the installation, that will be remedied by Select. The maintenance of the system, it's Select's system, they own it, and they will maintain it accordingly. If you think about it, the meter that the solar is feeding to is like a cash register. If the cash register isn't chingy, then they're not making the monies that they're expected for their investment. So they are watching the system on a regular basis, they're looking to ensure that it's optimized and working as it should be working, and they are maintaining the system in accordance with all of the manufacturer's specifications. School department has no responsibility for that.
Now, what if there is a need for snow removal on the roof?
So typically, I'm sure you've seen solar arrays covered in snow, and like my backdrop, that actually is on a landfill, and plenty of landfill projects have been under snow for short periods of time. If for some reason, generally speaking, you don't need to shovel the snow off of solar modules. Once the panels grab a peek of the sun, they'll start to slowly melt the snow in a normal way, as the snow would normally melt off of the roof. To the extent we have no mageddon, and there is more snow on the roof than the roof should be able to handle, though it's not only beyond the snow load capacity with the solar, it's way above that. We've had some instances in Massachusetts where we've had building inspectors that have said, shovel your roofs. In those unusual and unexpected events, we have provisions in the contract to work with Select for them to oversee that process happening.
Okay.
To make sure that it's safe and efficiently done to protect the integrity of the building.
Thank you.
Normally, no snow removal.
And what about, I was just going to, so I know you said this doesn't affect the roof warranty, but what is the process going through with the warranty to make sure that this isn't being affected if there are certain situations that could affect it? How is that being overseen?
So Select's project managers are going to first ensure that the roof is in adequate condition to receive the solar by working with the school's roofing manufacturer or installer, and they will identify any areas, and this actually had to do with the middle school and the high school, identify any areas that needed to be remedied before the solar could go on. Once the solar is installed, that same roofing manufacturer installer comes back and does a post-installation certification and ensures that the roofing warranty remains fully intact.
And we get that in writing?
Yes, that's part of the agreement, yes.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions from anyone?
I had two.
Go ahead.
So you had mentioned that it was a fairly short period of time for the install. Is that less than a day, within a couple of days? Can you just define that for me?
For the installation?
For the, sorry, not the installation, the placement of the materials on the roof. The amount of time that would cause the greatest.
From the parking lot or the area adjacent to the school to the roof?
Yep.
To the extent they need to bring in a crane, they're going to want to do it all in one day. This is a decent-sized system, but I think the, you know, the plan is, if it meant doing it over a weekend or during the school break or something, that would be their objective. But the objective would be to get it all brought up on the roof as soon as possible and get any of the equipment out of there that, you know, was used to hoist it up to the roof, whether it's a lift or a crane or whatever is necessary.
Okay.
We had discussed one to two days, unless there's something extraordinary, we have to, as Beth said, do it during vacation.
Okay. And I assume students would not be outside while the crane is operating? Or they would be cleared from that area? We would not have.
No, correct.
Yes. When the access to the building, so just looking through the agreement, it looks like the organization would have unlimited access to the building to come and go as they wish, but they would be quarried? Is that correct? Or do they need to be, are they given full access to the building, or do they need to be escorted when they enter the building? Because it looks like they would need to enter the building to get to the roof.
So to the extent they need to go through the building to get to the roof, anyone going through the building would first be quarried, and they would make arrangements with onsite personnel that, just like everyone else needs to do to get into the building, they'll check in with the front desk every time they need to, they'll get, they'll be badge as they need to, and they'll be restricted to the areas that they, you know, that they need to be in. So the only area within the building that they may need to be in within the building is the electrical room, which has access and not, you know, with the exposure to the student population.
That's correct. Okay. It did not seem to me, and I am far from an expert, that the current agreement fully states that. It looks like it states that they have access to the building, that they all, it does note that they need to be quarried, but I did not see that, although it is difficult because it references a agreement we don't have, which is the power purchase agreement. So it may be more clear in there, but that was.
So, yeah, so they have to abide by the standard access practices of the school. And so.
It's our procedure, right? They would know, no worker, no service provider, no one has access into the building without following our protocols, which, as Beth said, at any time, if they're going to have contact with students, is a query, and even if they've been quarried, they come in through the main entrance, they get badge, they don't have their own entrance, they don't have access codes or anything like that.
Okay. So it looks like this agreement references the power purchase agreement, so I just don't have visibility to see all of that language, so I am operating in the assumption that it's in there, but I would just ask that everyone ensure that it is, because I may be missing.
So I think, I think what they're saying is that wouldn't, that school protocols wouldn't necessarily be in the agreement. School protocols are for anyone that walks in the building. If anyone tries to walk in the building and walk past the front office, they're going to get, the police is going to get a call.
Understood. I don't see in this agreement anything that references that they need to follow school protocols.
But they don't have access into the building. They have to get buzzed in.
There's nobody that can get into the building without going through that window, getting buzzed in, and having to come to the front desk and having to show their ID and having to show. So even if it's not in there, just like anyone else that wants to walk into this building, into that building for whatever reason, they're not going to get in unless somebody lets them in. They're not going to have, like Dr. Cabral said, they're not going to have access codes, they're not going to have a key card, they're not going to have anything like that. Is that, am I stating that correctly?
I fully understand that and appreciate it. It is not what I am reading, so I'm just expressing that I just wanted to make sure that that was covered, because from my reading of this, it says that the lease grants them 24-hour, seven-day-a-week access to the property that they're leasing, which is the roof, so that's why I just wanted to make sure, because it references a agreement I can't see.
So they wouldn't be able to come in after hours then, is that what you're saying? So if the school office is closed and somebody wants to go check on the solar panels, they will not be able to, they will not have the codes to get in the building to do that?
No, they have access though, which means that they would contact Pony Copas, Director of Operations, myself, the school principal, and we would have to provide the access.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have kind of a follow-up question. So in reference to the snow, totally understand the snow, but what about that really fun winter when we had all the ice dams? And like the ice could like crawl under the panels, like the water could go underneath the panels and then the, and then freeze? Is that a possibility? Is that, am I crazy for asking?
Of course not.
You're not crazy, no, of course, it's absolutely valid question. So these modules, these systems are designed to be outdoors. They're designed, I mean, you can see the asset behind me, sitting on top of a landfill right on the ground, so you can imagine it's exposed to all of the elements. If for some reason, weather elements damaged some of the equipment, Select would know that right away. They have a monitoring system on the asset itself, and the monitoring system would tell them, it would send out an alert that something is wrong, they would contact the school and say, we need to get up there and see what's going on with the asset.
And I will tell you, Lauren, and. And I will tell you, Lauren and at all, there is no crazy question. I think I'd ask all of them, to be honest with you, because it is extremely complicated, and it can be extremely complicated, and we've covered a lot of things with them, and Beth is used to my questions, so you can ask anything.
Thank you.
But one of the things that, my takeaways, that kindly helped me understand is that, you know, the asset is designed to generate revenue, right? It's a business. And so they are incentivized to make sure that these are working at all times.
Right.
And they don't want it to be covered in snow, they don't want it to have damage, they don't want it to damage the roof that we- If we do, if for some reason the building inspector says you need to take snow off the roof, they actually send people out to make sure that everything is done properly. The way that it was explained to me was that you never even want to really shovel it, right? Because you don't want to have damage, sometimes they will put heating elements on it. But just by nature of the actual array, the, as soon as the sun is making contact with it, it is generating a certain degree of heat that helps facilitate the melting of the snow. And so, so it really isn't like just a plain roof, where you would just kind of go and shovel snow off of it, or just your regular roof in terms of the regular melting process. How did I do best with that?
That's perfect. That's perfect. I mean, typically you wouldn't want to shovel any, your roofs or being sitting on the roofs, unless there was a concern for structural damage in the building. And at that point, everybody is in sync that we need to address it, and we address that in the contract.
Okay, I have one last question, and then I'm done. On the day that the crane is staged to bring up the panels to the roof, is it staged in one spot, or will it move around the building to go from one end to the other? Or, I mean, I understand a crane is tall and, you know, but I don't really understand exactly how a crane works, so, yes, my question.
So I just, I just texted Byron, I said, "Are you guys going to need a crane?" And he said, "No, not planned." So they're probably going to be using a lift to bring it up, and they'll bring them up into different areas.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
What happens after the lease is up?
So there is a removal process in the agreement where they have to remove the asset, and, or there can be a negotiation to extend the lease and the power purchase agreement. They would both need to be extended for obvious reasons.
And Beth, can you, one of the questions that I had asked, could you talk briefly about what they anticipate the capacity or efficiency will be after the 20 years, at the 20-year point?
Absolutely. So solar modules themselves, those blue boxes behind me, those modules actually retain a very high percentage of their efficiency over their lifespan. And typically, the module manufacturer will warranty or guarantee the performance of those modules to be at 85% within, after 25 to 30 years. So there's, depending on the modules that are being used, it's either a 25- or 30-year warranty on performance to 85% of their original efficiency, which is, which is pretty good after that, you know, that term. Solar modules, solar arrays can actually last, will certainly last beyond a 20-year term that we, you know, analyzed here and would contract with Select. I was just involved with a project up on the North Shore where they were replacing a ground-mounted solar array that was installed during the Carter administration.
Wow.
So, you know, the modules outlasted our president.
Sorry, one last question. This, the organization Select, they have installed on other schools, I assume? This is a standard thing for them?
Yes, and I will not cheerlead for them, but I will tell you, they are a local Hopkinton-based company. They were selected because of their portfolio of rooftops and ground mounts and carport arrays in the Massachusetts area. High Power Options, which is a not-for-profit serving, not-for-profits and public entities, and they have installed systems across the Commonwealth in many of the communities neighboring Easton. They just finished up a awesome installation in Maynard, where they did a rooftop and a carport canopy, and they're working with other communities that I'm actually, I'm representing the communities, I don't represent them, working with other communities and doing ground mounts, rooftops, and carport installations. So they have a very significant portfolio.
Thank you very much. Any other last questions?
Go ahead. So I'm going, because I know the day that all the materials are brought is, you know, people are a little bit concerned about that. I would guess that school administration and the principal and the staff would have, like, a special backup plan for drop-off and dismissal that day if it winds up being a little crazy, and that parents would be notified well in advance, and I'm sure they're already thinking about how to reconfigure things in the short term just to get this through for the day, if they can't do it on a weekend or a school vacation.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Chair Wiseman, there were just a couple things you guys did great. Probably all the questions I could think of asking, just a couple of other things that I had asked that, you know, should you think of it later. If you remember from the presentation that Beth did, excuse me, you may have seen the, in the illustration of the solar arrays, there was one area that was noticeably absent of them. As Beth had noted, the areas where the RTU, rooftop unit, those kinds of things around them, that is clear, but then there's also one whole square area that is free of arrays. If you remember, when we built Blanche Team, we also, in addition to making the roof solar-ready, we also had a proactive plan, should we need to add on if we were to run out of space, the actual, the area, that footprint you see that isn't used, is actually the administration wing, the only one story area of the building. That is designed to be, it's about the same, it's about the size of one of our quote-unquote neighborhoods, four classrooms, four to five classrooms, and that has been designed to be built up. And so should we need to, in the future, add on, we have the capacity of four classrooms on the main floor, but also four to five classrooms above that. And so that's why it's noticeably absent there. We made sure to avoid that area. And then also to let you know that we have been working, as Beth noted, with Lisa Need, Town Council, very extensively. She has way more experience with Beth as well. They've worked on many, many projects together, and they've been hammering out the really finite details that are very legally mired, to the extent that I have trouble understanding it, but they've been very gracious and good about really getting all that information across to us. And so it will be very, very fine-tuned in the final iteration. And so we ask you to vote on this this evening for the lease agreement with the final tweaks that Attorney Need will be putting into place, because we'll not go through without that final recommendation and approval from Lisa Need. I just want to also reiterate that this has just been going back and forth with legal, not necessarily because there have been any strong objections, but just to make sure that it is lock solid, and just doing a tremendous job at that as well.
Thank you for that information. Any follow-up on, no? Okay, so then I will take a motion to approve the lease agreement with Select Energy Development LLC with the final approval by Town Council, and recommend that the Select Board enter into the power purchase agreement with Select Energy as well. Is that the, is that what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have somebody making that motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Greenblatt. Thank you, Dr. Cabral.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Byron, wherever you are.
Take care, have a great night, folks.
Okay, next item on the agenda, update on budget subcommittee meeting. Okay, so, the budget subcommittee met on July 28th. I have a lot of information, so I'm going to do some reading. As a reminder, the budget subcommittee is comprised of two representatives from the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee, which is Jim and myself, the superintendent, the town administrator, the town accountant, the school director of finance, and the assistant town administrator, who's a non-voting member. The subcommittee did not meet last year because of, the PACE committee took up the work typically done by this committee. Usually we don't meet until late fall or early winter, but because of the budget situation, it made sense to start discussing the budget for fiscal year '27 now. We elected officers, Jen Stacy from the Select Board was elected chair, and I was elected vice chair. We reviewed and discussed the subcommittee charge, and no changes were suggested at that time. That information's in your packet for background information, which I've also included the town's fund management policy as well. Most of the discussion was focused on Town Administrator Reed's preliminary planning scenarios for fiscal year 2027. And Jim, Dr. Cabral, feel free to jump in any time. Mr. Reed discussed four possible options moving forward with the budget. Of the four options proposed, the subcommittee agreed that number three, which is seeking the same override again for fiscal, for the next fiscal year, was not realistic. So in planning for fiscal year '27, we are looking at three remaining options. The first is to cut more from the operating budgets and not use reserves to help close the gap as we have in the past. This could mean a 0% increase in the operating budgets for fiscal year '27. Since costs go up each year, price of goods and services, utilities, transportation, special education, among others, and we will be entering into a collective bargaining year, a 0% increase could mean cutting 3% to 5% of operating capacity from the outset. That doesn't mean there wouldn't be further cuts. Option two is to spread out the cuts over several years and drawing down on reserve funds. This would lessen the immediate impact, but would not eliminate the need for further cuts. Following this option could leave us in a position where we would be less able to withstand any unforeseen issues, like a downturn in the economy, unfunded mandates, or freezing of funds by the federal government, for example. Option three is to seek an alternative or smaller override. We could seek a smaller override amount, or we could use the menu approach. This would still require further cuts. So we'll be meeting monthly, and Jim, Dr. Cabral, and I will continue to give updates. In addition, Jim will be keeping track of school committee issues that could influence the budget, and will update the subcommittee on those issues. The subcommittee will continue to discuss these options, but we wanted to get your feeling about the options. And just as an FYI, there is a page on the town's website where we'll have constant updates to the fiscal year '27 budget, which is www.easton MA.us/fy27budget. So I know it's not a fun discussion by any means, but please let me know your thoughts.
It would be helpful for me just to understand if there's a strong inclination that either of you have on either of these, or a strong reaction. I'm certainly happy to share my thoughts. And I have a few thoughts on them, but I know you've spent more time on it as part of the budget subcommittee.
Yeah.
So if there are strong feelings that either of you have around these.
I mean, I think the budget subcommittee was really based on Mr. Reed's recommendation, leaning toward option one, which is, what do we say, the rip-off-the-band-aid approach, which is going to be very painful, but we're concerned about spending down the reserves. Jim, please.
Yeah, no, we already spent three and a half million in reserves to get through this year, and there's, I know Connor would probably want more exact numbers, I think there was seven million in reserves. So we have technically three and a half-ish million left for that option two. And it already looks, if you look on the back of the packet, sorry for everyone, they're projecting, it's very early, a deficit of one point, almost two million.
Yeah.
So it would be essentially spending almost half of what's left of the reserves again.
That's without any increases, that's with a zero-
Right.
Level funding, even last year, which already represents a big deficit.
For option three, for what it's worth, I think this would have to have been done by September, the vote would happen by September 15th for it to be valid, so I think we already missed the date quite a bit to do option three.
Yeah, and the Select Board would have had to put it on their agenda like last month, so, yeah.
Yeah, so option three is definitely not an option for us anymore.
That is the same override.
Yes.
We're hitting that for the-
No, that's the smaller override. No, that's the same override.
Four is pursuing a smaller or different-
Oh, got it, okay. That was for this year. So the thing about option three is that it was the same override again for the current year.
Right.
To get us out of the current year hole.
Okay.
And there was discussion and recognition that the vote was very indicative of the lack of appetite for that from the system, for the reason that it would not make sense to bring forward the same option.
So, so my initial reaction for the, for the smaller override, the menu option, I would like to understand how, how the menu will get selected, menu options would get selected, and obviously, I'm a towns person, I care very much for the town, but I am representing the schools, so I would want to make sure that the school department is well represented in, as an op, menu option for me to fully support it.
Four, just to be clear, is menu is one of the options. You could also just go for a smaller, general override.
Yeah.
So just to, not to corner us that a menu is number four as the option, but-
Right. And with the acknowledgement that even if we were to use same amount going forward, there would still have to be further cuts. So going for a smaller amount going forward is not going to kind of save us from some really-
A hundred percent.
-hurtful cuts. I have never been part of a menu override, maybe Dr. Cabral has. I know when we talked about this way back in 2017, 2016, we kind of talked about that option, and there was always a concern that people would kind of cancel out each other on the menu options. So it wouldn't be that effective, but I don't, do you have a feeling about that, Dr. Cabral?
I do not. It, it tends to hit departments against each other, but it is, it is an option. Poor residents would feel very strongly about one or two or three departments who make those choices. No, they may not just, full disclosure, they may come up with a, a menu that doesn't include the school department at all, or they might come up with a menu that is just the school department, or the school department and the police department, or just fire and police, or just T W and police. That's, that's the nature of the menu option. It does provide more expression, if you will, or voices to the citizens who make it very strongly about certain departments or the other.
Appreciate that. From my perspective, I agree with your sentiments that I am not comfortable with using reserves any further. I think that drawing down on the reserves puts us at a significant amount of risk, especially given some of the uncertainty with federal funding and some of the things that we may face as a town and school system. I just worry that the reserves are there for those things, for the reserves, for the emergencies, and intending, planning to spend them intentionally to just simply delay the inevitable, I don't see as a particularly productive way of using them. The Band-Aid will come off at some point to the rip-the-band-aid off piece. So I have concerns about option two. I would, while I agree with the comment that at some point the Band-Aid has to come off, I would be interested in understanding, as similar to what Lauren said, what a smaller override would look like and what that would help mitigate. I remain concerned about the, some of the cuts that were made across the board. From a police and fire and emergency standpoint, I am worried about that. I'm worried about their response to the schools and their ability to respond to us in emergencies. So I am worried about that. So I think that we may find that to be a lot more difficult than people- So I think that we may find that to be a lot more difficult than people hope. I worry that other towns are also going through their own financial strain and that our assumption that neighboring towns will be able to provide service and supplement our emergency service personnel may not be the case. That if they are cut as thin as we are, that it will become very difficult across the board to support each other. And I worry about our students that some of the cuts we made over time will become very painful. And so I don't, I think some of them will absorb. We're taking on some larger cost sizes this year. It's not enjoyable, but it will be managed. But there are other things I think that will be very painful. So I would be interested in understanding what a smaller override specifically would address to see if that is an option and if that would prevent deeper, more painful cuts, particularly on those areas, you know, in the event of a crisis. We need to ensure that we are meeting the areas of greatest need, and those are some of my concerns with, with more significant cuts. That being said, I think we have to prepare for option one because even if we attempt for a small override, they don't happen.
Colleen?
Well, I don't like any of them at all. And I, I like the thought of a menu option only because I think there, to Kelly's point, there's a lot of concern about fire and the police and emergency responders and having, I think I read there's like nine vacancies right now. And that's not sustainable for a town. And it bothers me that there is, you know, there wasn't an appetite to really keep our town funded in a manner that's going to allow us to have all of these services. I mean, and that doesn't even get into the schools. However, so I think the menu one could be, could be a really good lever for the town to maybe preserve some of our services going forward. I don't know that it would help the schools as much as I think fire and police might, might come out on top in that because that's something that's just a little bit more visible to all, all residents. But maybe, maybe if we go with one, it's going to have to get really, really bad before folks realize just how bad it can get, you know, if we don't, if we don't make some changes to how we fund our town.
Yep. I guess one other comment I would make too for the Budget Subcommittee is that the master plan work is going on as well. And I know there's been a lot of questions across the town of, you know, well, how can we bring more revenue, right? We have a new, there's tax revenue, and that's where the, the tax income that comes, and that's what we're talking about with an override. And then there's a long-term sustainable, like how do we bring more revenue to town? And how much, just trying to bring more revenue to town ultimately changed the feeling of this town? So an interesting conversation to have in the context of the Easton 300. But, you know, the master plan is looking at ways to try to make it easier to bring more revenue to town, to increase areas where we could potentially have more businesses and more of that. And so if the two things can align to understand when that, when the Master Plan Committee, which I'm part of, is projecting that we might be able to do that. Now, we can try to attract businesses. We can't guarantee they come, right? But there is some, some of the work in the updated master plan that's being done to look at ways in which we can attempt to try to bring more business to town. And I, that won't mitigate this problem, but it may help people understand that for another four or five years, you rip the Band-Aid off, but it's still four or five more years before we see that revenue come in. So it is a long-term problem, not a short-term problem.
And the unfortunate part is, in the next four or five years, the children of Easton suffer. Like, they don't get the school experience that they should have. They don't get the opportunities and supports that they should have, and our staff doesn't get everything that they should have because while we're waiting for four or five years, that's, that's someone's childhood. That's someone's high school experience. So that's just unfortunate.
Yep.
Any other? Okay, thank you. So we will bring your thoughts back to our next, our next meeting is September 8th, I think. Yeah. So we'll be, we'll be meeting quite a bit. So I appreciate your comments, and we'll, we'll continue to keep you updated as well.
Thank you for working on this.
Yes.
Critical. It's unfortunate and critical.
Yeah. Okay, next item, introduction of our new Director of Finance, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. We have a turnover in our, our business office. Andrea Starzewski, who has been serving us so well for the last several years, is, has moved out of state already, and she's moving on. We thank her very much for her service, and she's brought a great perspective to our finance office and gives them really meaningful and wonderful leadership. I am delighted to reintroduce you. We were fortunate to meet Joe Stagna online. He is here to meet you in person this evening. I'm sorry, I am not there. Just to repeat, unfortunately, I have some illness in my household and, but it might be safer for all of you if I attempted, or I apologize for my absence, especially when we are meeting Joe this evening. Joe is very experienced in public school finance after a long-term stint in Rhode Island. He most recently worked at, in the Blackstone Millville Regional School District of Massachusetts. Came very highly regarded, was part of our rigorous and very inclusive interview process. And I am very happy to introduce him to you in person this evening and would invite you to direct any comments or questions to him, but also would invite him to address the School Committee or public via our platform here if he's here.
Yes, please, please.
Joe will hopefully start on September 15th. But I have to say, he has been extremely generous working after hours with us and contacting us and working with Andrea on a transition, even though their, their physical times in district are different. And so I really want to thank him for that. He's obviously not obliged to do that. But of course, he is very professional and is taking this transition very seriously as much. But he's already been doing for us. So Joe, welcome to the Easton family, and please.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank not only the Hiring Committee, but Dr. Cabral and the School Committee for the opportunity. I did have some chance over the past couple of weeks to meet with some of the Business Office staff, some of the leadership team who I found were very creative, I guess is a good word. And I did meet with Wendy over at the town also, and it's nice to see that there's a lot of collaboration and support for the school district, which is great. I am looking forward to it. The hardest part right now is I've got another month before I can come in and be here 100%. But I am trying to keep up and keep things going and keep up to date as much as I can outside of my work with BMR right now. But I am looking forward to it. Again, thank you very much. I can't wait to get here.
Thank you. We're excited for you to get started, too.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can't wait for you to come to Budget Subcommittee meeting.
What a warm welcome we gave you to that budget.
I know, right?
Okay.
We were, Joe knew what he was getting into. We told him before.
If I could just add, though, you know, as being part of the Hiring Committee, Joe, the expertise that he brings to the districts, I'm really excited and looking forward to. His experience is, is fantastic, and his knowledge of school districts is, is paramount. And so we're, I know that when we interviewed him, not only was his personality fantastic and a nice fit, but his knowledge was really something that I felt comfortable with, very comfortable with, and excited that he can just hit the ground running. And so thank you, Joe, for, for applying and for accepting. We are very excited to welcome you.
No pressure on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, vote to approve out-of-state trip, Dr. Cabral.
So we have Coach Extraordinaire Kyle Sisikas, who is again presenting his cross-country team meet that is in Rhode Island. I will pass it over to him, as usual. He does a great job giving you details of this for school committee policy. We need to approve any out-of-state trip, including for Rhode Island. And so he is here looking for that, and we support his request and ask you to vote to approve this during the four, our cross-country athletes. Vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time tonight. I know this request is going to be familiar to some of you from previous years, but just to contextualize it a bit, we're requesting permission on Saturday, September 27th, to travel to the Ocean State Cross-Country Invitational in Warwick, Rhode Island. It's an invitational that we've attended for the last 12 years. It's a great opportunity for our team. It is out-of-state, so we need the special permission. But it's a great opportunity. And just to contextualize it a bit further, it's one of the biggest meets in the area that allows us to have all of our athletes compete. And we have a large roster, so we really appreciate the opportunity, even if it is over the border, to be able to go to such a great meet and have all of our athletes have a great experience.
Awesome. All right, any questions from committee members? Okay, then I will take a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for the OA Cross-Country Team to Warwick, Rhode Island.
So moved, pursue?
Second.
Proudler second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Good luck.
Yes, good luck, Charles.
Okay. Next item, vote to approve donation from Sarah's Village, Dr. Cabral.
Our student Sorry, I don't think you can hear it, but the manipulation of the microphone right now is very, very loud for people online, so.
Oh.
We do have to be careful not to touch the actual speaker.
That one. Yeah, it's that one. Yep.
Sorry. It took me a minute to remember that you probably can't hear what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are, we have just been so fortunate. Our students have been so fortunate to benefit from the absolute generosity of Mark and Cynthia Brezner and Sarah's Village. And as you can see, Director Davidson is in attendance this evening to discuss their most recent, very significant donation, what the intention is for its use, a little bit of background on how we have benefited from this, this very generous, generous donations in the past. And of course, to answer any questions that the committee had. Director Davidson?
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. On behalf of Mark and Cynthia Brezner Hand, the co-founders of Sarah's Village, I'm honored to share an update with you this evening. While they are unable to be here in person tonight, I want to acknowledge what they have been in the partnership that they have brought to our district. They have allowed us to provide our staff, students, and families with resources and opportunities that help break down the barriers and stigma surrounding mental health. This year, being year five of our partnership, Sarah's Village Foundation has made a generous contribution of $30,000 towards a donation towards the Easton Public Schools. This is a $10,000 increase from previous years and last year's donation. Sarah's Village is a Massachusetts-based nonprofit with the perfect mission to promote wellness, eliminate the stigma associated with mental health illness, and reduce the rate of suicide among young adults and young people in our communities across Massachusetts and throughout the United States. Their impact over the previous years in our district has been remarkable. Their support has made the following possible: Mining Your Mind speakers in 7th and 10th grade health classes, reaching over 550 students, as well as 5th graders at Richardson Olmstead sharing personal journeys of mental health and wellness. Author Ivy Watts speaking to more than 800 students at the middle school about her story and strategies for mental well-being. The 97 Club hosting activities during Mental Health Awareness Month, including pet therapy and a poster contest. Mark and Cynthia has also met with Oliver Ames High School's Active Minds Club to explore future collaborations and have provided resources and funding for some partnerships for that club outside of our walls. This school year, the generosity has expanded even further. We didn't application process, but we had so many people across the district interested. And they provided additional opportunities with increased funding over the years to provide fidget tools, organizational aids, mindfulness materials, and sensory items for students PK through 22 years old, supporting over 250 students district-wide. We also received sensory materials and tools designed specifically for our neurodivergent learners in grades PK through 2, supporting over 50 children at Blount James. And in person tonight is Marcy DeCamara, a founder of Be Inspired Counseling. Upon acceptance of the donation tonight, a partnership between the Easton Public Schools, Sarah's Village, and Be Inspired Counseling is arranged to provide therapeutic services for Easton Public Schools students who have emergent needs or lapses in insurance coverage. This is a model that we're very proud of, and we're also taking a little bit of what Norton has been doing the previous few years with a similar partnership through Sarah's Village and trying to extend that to our students through Marcy and her organization. Would you like to add anything to that piece?
We're just, we're grateful for the Brezner Hands and for our EPS for giving us this opportunity to partner with you all. We do see a lot of EPS students over the years, so we're very familiar with the district. I'm a district parent. So we're glad that we can just be able to be a part of this, this venture with everybody.
Thank you. And just for some background information, Norton has reached over 94 students in the previous three years through their partnership to provide services during those, those lapses in coverage. We are deeply grateful for Sarah's Village's foundations, sorry. We are greatly deeply grateful for Sarah's Village Foundation's contribution and partnership. Mark and Cynthia's dedication to young mental health, to youth mental health has been, has been profound and lasting throughout the school community and the area, and the impact is unbelievable and unmeasurable. We are proud to call them partners in this important work, and we, on their behalf, are asking the School Committee to take into consideration their donation of $30,000 for this upcoming school year. They are really upset they couldn't be here tonight, and I promised them that they could come and provide a presentation like they do each year.
That would be great.
Potentially September, October, and they were, they were hopeful that you would accept that offer, too.
Of course. No, that would be great. Yeah.
Thank you.
Committee members, anyone?
That's absolutely amazing.
Yeah.
Absolutely phenomenal. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I just want to add that mental health for children is at such a pivotal time right now. It is very hard to find clinicians. And the opportunity that this has for our district and for our children is astronomical. It's really just wonderful that, that we are prioritizing this, that Sarah's Village has been able to support us with this. And Be Inspired Counseling is just a phenomenal resource that our students will be able to have access to at a faster pace. And I'm just, I feel so blessed that we're able to have this opportunity for our kids.
That's incredible.
It truly
Yeah, back from working with Marcy, Be Inspired already. And so we know that it's, it's a great partnership, and we appreciate Marcy's part in all of this as well. Excuse me, and Be Inspired. We are confident in the work that they do and benefit that they provide to students. Just a wonderful committee all around.
And I think it's important to talk about the increase in funding, being able to create this partnership and not miss the things that we already have established within the district. So when we met with the Brezner Hands recently, we're going to continue with the application process because there's going to be a pretty good amount of funding left to just continue with some of the items that we have done in the past and those opportunities for our students in health classes and throughout the district. And so we're really excited about that partnership and all that they're bringing to our district.
It is absolutely incredible what they have turned a terrible tragedy into to be able to help all these kids.
Lauren?
And just thinking about that, that lapse in coverage for, for some kids and families and the absolute nightmare of dealing with referral process and trying to get someone on board with Mass Health and find a clinician, that, that can turn a, us, keep a small issue as a smaller issue before it really escalates to something that's a true crisis for our kids. So that's just, that's just phenomenal.
We have slots designated, 10 slots right now per week designated
We have slots designated, 10 slots right now per week designated for crises to come in. And those clinicians will follow them. A lot of them are during the daytime, but we know that kids in mental health crises aren't accessing the curriculum.
Absolutely. Right. Absolutely.
Then we do have some actual ones as well, but we have at least 10 slots dedicated per week.
That's wonderful.
This is, this is amazing. I appreciate everything that they've done. I think it's great. My question, and I don't know if we really have an answer, but how are the students getting identified for these services?
So what we're going to model our partnership off of is that Norton partnership. And so our school adjustment counselors, our school psychologists, people on our therapeutic team, guidance counselors, nurses, there will be a structured process to recommend students in these situations and families and connect us with resource, connect families with the resource that we have available. And I also want to make sure that I share out, you know, it's very easy to drive the car when the roadmap is being provided to you. And so the partnership that Norton has and the conversations we've had with many CERSE over there have been awesome, but it would really, the partnership in this opportunity this year was brought to us by our own counseling staff at the high school. And it was their thought process and their belief in what we were missing as a district in some of these scenarios. And so the counselors at the high school brought it forward, and Kristin Ucholi drove the, gave us the directions on how to accomplish this task. And so I had the easy job of finalizing it. But Kristin really brought it to our attention and how we could do it, and she was wonderful in that process.
So I don't want to make like an assumption, but I know that we have like a pool of students who are typical of, you know, free and, what is it called?
Free and reduced.
Free and reduced lunch and the financially, the students who have financial needs. But I think that there's also a large percentage of people who do have health insurance, however, do not have mental health coverage, that if they do already see someone, they're paying out of pocket, and it's a huge burden.
Financial burden.
Financial burden on them, that this could potentially be helpful for those students who wouldn't normally get recognized because they're not part of the typical free and reduced lunch group of profile.
Yeah.
I don't know if I explained that well, but.
No, no, that makes sense. And I think, I think it was Colleen's point, too, that even if they have coverage, finding a provider is so, it's just so hard. And if they're in crisis, they need help now.
Right.
And so I think, you know, thank you, Marcy, very much. I mean, I know you have a lot of wonderful people working in your organization, and I just so grateful to this family and this organization. It's just really, really a wonderful, wonderful gift for us, so thank you.
So as I shared earlier, the, what we would like you to take into consideration tonight is the donation from Sarah's Village for $30,000.
So I will take a motion to approve the donation from Sarah's Village for $30,000.
So moved, Loomis.
Second?
Persia, second.
All in favor with our profound thanks.
Profound thanks.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Marcy.
Zoom just went down. Dr. Cabral, can you still see us?
You can, yes.
Okay.
The light's flipped, so I'm wondering.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that says it's connecting.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Are we okay to continue, or do you need him?
I'm on Zoom.
Yeah, it said that, it said that she's the host now versus before she was the co-host.
I didn't touch anything.
No, I thought it, the light worked, so I think we had a power.
Sorry.
Are we okay to continue? All right, we'll continue. All right, next item, discussion and vote to approve on updates to the Oliver Ames Program Studies, Dr. Cabral.
People Kavanagh from Oliver Ames is here this evening. She has some recommended program of studies adjustments that she would like you to, we would like you to, that are voting on, these include the agenda attached, and she will explain the changes as well as any.
Mrs. Kavanagh, would you like us to move?
I do have a presentation due, I want to ask one clarifying question. It's handbook updates, not programs. Realizing that.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to change the title to discussion and vote to approve the updates for the OA Handbook. Do I have a second?
So moved, Loomis.
All right, do I have a second?
Persia, second.
All in favor? I think it should be fine.
Thank you for catching up.
Yes, I do have a presentation for you. If you'd like to sit in the audience.
Is our next item?
Do we have any of it in our pocket?
The next item is.
I'll just check all my stuff.
We do have it.
Annual contract.
Okay, so not a.
I also, as you've seen, part of our, part of our Oliver Ames student handbook doesn't include the athletic handbook, so our Athletic Director, Mary McDonald, should be online for this presentation as well. Thank you so much. As you know, every year, we have a handbook committee that reviews our student handbook that includes students, parents, staff, and central office administrators. This year, it was Director Perez and Director Ramos who joined us, which is, kind of say I appreciate them doing, spending their time with us and giving us the perspective, especially that DEI perspective is huge for us. They review the handbook. As you know, we've made a lot of changes since I started at OA. This year, we only have two changes to the handbook, and that's a result of the hard work that they've put in over the past three years. So I'm going to jump in, and then I'm going to pass it over to Mary, who will go over the athletic handbook information. So first, in our absence policy, we allow all students three excused absences as long as they have documentation in order, as it was previously stated, to do college visits. What we want to recognize is the fact that not all students are looking at post-secondary planning that involves college, or we have students who want to look at what they might want to major in and shadow different people in different careers. So we're changing just the title of it, that it's College and Career Exploration Days, and it does not have to be documentation from a college. It can be documentation from any site that you're visiting to explore what you might want to do after high school. Any questions on that? No, okay. The second change is around our course change selection and our ad drop policy. So something that was brought to our attention, which we are super grateful for this year, is that there was some language that was different in our program of studies and our student handbook in regards to course change policy. And that, I think, is honestly just an oversight as things changed over time, not changing them in both locations. So we want to make sure that it's really clear and easily understood. So as you can see formally, it didn't have a lot of specifics around what second marking period was, what course changes versus a course override. So we've decided the handbook committee recommends that we divide it into two sections in the handbook. The first is course ad drop. So at the end of every year, teachers make a recommendation for students in terms of what courses they recommend for the next year. Most of that's around leveling or what electives they might want to take. Students then have the first two cycles of school to kind of see how their courses are fitting for them. It's not a lot of time, but sometimes an elective just doesn't feel like a good fit, and they can change their, their schedule in those first few weeks with very little additional kind of hoops to jump through, right? They can go, they can meet with their counselor, they can make, ask for the change, the counselor can put the change through with notification to the parent. After that, we really want the student to look into like, why are I making this change? Because our courses are set and our class sizes are set at that point. And we want them to have conversations with the department head, with their counselor, their teacher, and their administrator when they're going to make a course change after that. So we've basically just articulated that and memorialized that process within this policy. Then we have separated course overrides. So what a course override is, is when a student with their parent, because we do ask for their parent involvement in this process, wants to override the recommendation of a teacher. And that, most of the time, the majority of our overrides are to go up a level, but there are some where they want to go to a lower level. And that involves a meeting with the department head, the teacher, and the parent to make that decision. When they make that decision, we really encourage students to enter into the year with the commitment to staying in that class. And so we ask them to stay through the first semester. We do that with a variety of supports, through our H block, through if they are struggling in the course, or if they're finding that they want to, they're considering that the course might be a stretch for them. We want to encourage them that productive struggle is a good thing, and that you decided last year you really want to take this course, and we're asking you to stick it out. You can obviously change if your circumstances change, if you have health issues, that's done through an administrator. But this separates that course override policy from the course ad drop. Does that make sense? I live this every day, and I know you don't, so I want to make sure I'm explaining it in a way that that is making sense to you.
So there's a difference between if a student is taking a course and then decides it's not the right course for them, they have the two cycles.
Yep.
To add drop.
Yep.
This is different. This is if they had override.
Right.
What the recommendation was, and so now they don't have the option to add drop in that period.
Correct.
Only.
The course that they override would, yeah.
Okay.
My, I love how you verbally explained it.
Yep.
But it's not explained what it is on here.
Okay.
And it would be helpful to have like a definition of what it means.
Okay. Oh, a definition of an override.
Yeah, or just like a situational example.
Yeah.
Or something.
Or even just a sentence at the beginning that says, once course recommendation process is complete, here's the definition of an override.
Yeah.
Here's what an override looks like. Okay.
I feel like this would be hard to read for a student or a parent trying to figure out the system.
Yeah.
To your point, you live it.
Right.
Most of them probably don't.
Yeah, and our handbook team lives it, right? Okay.
Especially if an override is to not take a recommended course. Because I'm thinking of juniors get recommended for all honors and APs and what have you, and they go, that's just a lot. Like, so appreciate that each individual teacher thought I was able to do it, but in this one area, I just want a little bit lighter load because I don't think I can do all the load, right? I would not have thought of that as an override.
Yeah.
Per se.
Yeah.
It would, you know, so I think clarifying it would be very helpful.
Okay.
And I want to also clarify something you said, which was, there are, of course, outside of all this, incredible extenuating circumstances that someone may go through.
Yep.
And in that case, there's other modifications that would be made.
I approved several course changes after an override last year due to, like you said, extenuating circumstances where the student just really needed us to adjust their schedule so that they could feel successful at school.
Yep, totally understand.
Yeah. Okay.
And so is this, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So I know this is for the handbook, but is this the language that's in the program of studies as well?
Yes, so, well, yes, the course ad drop is, I want to make sure that, like I said, it's the same. So it is a recommended change to, and make sure that it's in, my recommendation to you is to vote to put it both in the handbook and the program of studies this college.
Okay.
I'll let you decide what you want to do. I can come back to you in your September meeting with some additional language for the course override to add to that policy if you want, if you want to hold off on vote on that one at another time.
I don't know, what do you, I mean, I think I trust you to do it.
Yeah, I would, just for the clarification of those students who are, and families who are starting the year, I would encourage you to make the change now with the noted explanation, and.
I will.
I'm sure you'll do it.
Okay, great, that sounds good.
One more thing, I noticed the change goes from, it goes from the principal for final approval to new, now to the assistant principal for final approval. Just from my own understanding, is there a reason, just thinking about admin workloads and things like that, that it needs to go to either the principal or assistant principal at all? Like, or maybe I just don't know the reason it needs to go to that many levels.
Okay, so it used to be the principal, and now it's the assistant principal?
Yes, and I'm just curious, why?
Why the change?
Do they need to be involved? I guess why the change, but maybe more importantly, is there a way to streamline this or a reason they have to be involved?
I appreciate you looking out for, for workloads 100%. The reason is that we want consistency. So when there's only two people in the building who are making these decisions, the two of them can talk and decide, make sure that we're, from an equity standpoint and a fairness, the approvals that we're making are consistent with every kid. The other piece of it is that with the assistant principals now having specific grade levels, they really know these kids very well. And so with them pairing with the counselor, it's not a very heavy lift for them to make those decisions, doesn't take a lot of time, and it's important for them to know just so they can have a full picture of the students on their caseloads.
And then just to kind of follow up on what Jim was saying, under the course override, or no, not that, under course ad drop, it says, except in the case of extenuating circumstances with approval from the administration. Is it, anyone in the administrat?
It could be either assistant principal or principal.
Okay.
Any of the three of us, too.
Thank you.
Before we completely switch over to the athletic handbook, I just wanted to comment on the prior slide.
Yeah.
I love that. Like, I really, really love that. So I really appreciate whoever raised it and the fact that they raised it. I think it's much more equitable. I think it really does help students think about all of the different paths that they could take, and it's, it's a much easier way for students to also, some of it may have done, like, even those who are choosing college may have chosen to look at colleges over the summer, but need a day to like shadow a job site, to consider something, to help them choose between schools. Like, I just think that this is a much more successful way to set students up for career choices.
And if I can, just give a little shout out to Sonia Warwick and Davina Ma. Those are the two students on the committee, and they're the ones who brought this up.
Love that.
It's a great change.
I know, the power for students are great. So.
Mary, before you go further, I just wanted, I'm sure you would have thought of this, but can you just send that amended language to Lynn so that she can share it with the school committee so that they don't need to wait for the handbook to come out and get for that language, just so that they can have it in it?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on? So as you know, Mary McDonald joined us two years ago as Athletic Director, and she's done a lot of work over trying to create consistent systems across different teams and programs. And so she is here online to present to you some changes to the athletic student, student and family handbook, to memorialize some policies and procedures that we have had in place over the course of the years, but that were not necessarily either accurately or at all in the handbook. All right, Mary, I'm going to pass it over to you. I can see you.
All right, thank you. So yeah, just to kind of reiterate what Kelly said, I've been able to finally dive in and actually read every line of the handbook and stuff like that after being here for two years. And again, I was out the spring on maternity leave to try to get everything together, but wanted to get it set up for the school year. And basically, what I did, a lot of it was just reorganizing it to make it more user-friendly. And me, being new here, is kind of hard to find some of the rules and stuff like that, so I think the parents will appreciate it and how I laid it out. I think you guys have got the link to it. Correct me if I'm wrong, have you guys got the link? Okay.
Can I jump in, Mary, real quick?
Yeah.
So they, you have a link of everything that was either moved or changed, highlighted in green. Mary's actually going to highlight in these slides what was actually changed. The other information was just moved to reorganize it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah. So, and like you alluded to, Ms. Kavanagh, I included items and policies that have been in place that just weren't written in here, and things that I've had parents ask me about. So I think it'll be easier and more transparent of kind of the day-to-day in the athletic department, and they can actually see the rules behind it, so I think that'll be helpful. So like you said, everything in green and stuff that I added, it's things, like, I didn't change anything, just things that were not included previously that I think would be very helpful to be in a handbook that parents have access to. Like, for example, a big one is like all the awards at the end of the year, how they're selected, how a kid becomes a Hawkemoff All-Star, all scholastic, our program, I mean, our department awards and stuff like that. So I think stuff like that would be helpful for parents to see how everything in the processes are. Sorry, we have a thunderstorm and I have a crying. And then, yeah, so the two things that, do you still have the slide there up for them? Kelly, have the two main.
Oh, yeah, you can't see them now, yeah. So right now, it says senior athletic athlete cuts on the top, on the screen.
Okay, perfect, yeah. So if you want, I guess, any question on the green, highlighted green stuff on there? There's no real changes, it's just the organization where it was previously, or it was. or it wasn't included at all, but I'm not changing or recommending anything different than what we currently do and has been done previously. Um, and then I was gonna just, if no questions on that, I was gonna touch on the two items that I ended up highlighting in red, which are the things that weren't included previously in the handbook, but poli-, like I guess policies that the department did that I feel could use a change, that I think would help everyone in the department. So those are the two that I think Kelly has the slides up for. So the first one was senior athlete cuts. So, oh, I can see it now. Okay, perfect. So basically previously it said that there was, you could never cut a senior any circumstance for any of our programs. And I'll preface this with, we're obviously still gonna try to avoid cutting seniors whenever possible because I think, you know, we love our seniors, we want them to participate as long as they can, but I think it's had some unfortunate consequences in not allowing, never to be able to cut anyone. One being our, our coaches are end up forced to have to cut kids earlier, you know, sophomore, junior year because they don't, because they know they can't keep them their senior year. And what that's doing is taking away a year or two that kids could participate in on the JV team, get more experience and potentially make that varsity team their senior and be able to play. Also too, it's taking away roster spots on the varsity team for underclassmen. So say freshmen or sophomores that are deserving, experience wise, would be able to play, but there's no room on the team because they're seniors that can't be cut, taking up those roster spots. And in addition to that, it's allowing, you know, larger roster sizes, which is having more kids that aren't able to participate and are, you know, sitting on the bench. So a lot of our coaches had voiced that they would like to have that option, you know, to cut a senior if necessary. Again, I don't foresee it happening often, especially right now, we don't have a lot of teams that have to make cuts, so it doesn't happen. But I would like just to have the leniency, if a situation arises, that they could do that, if it's gonna benefit the program as a whole and not be held that they can't do it no matter what. So that's the first one. I guess any questions on that or comments?
I have a question, was that, um, is this something that has been discussed with any group of student athletes to hear their voice and reaction to it? Say like a group of, of captains or, or other individuals who might be able to give a bit of feedback on it? Cause they're sort of a, a pro con, I heard you articulate around the fact they would get more time to play potentially, but then obviously as a senior, that would be a devastating moment to be cut. So have student, has student voice been heard on this?
Not on this, I have got feedback from all the coaches, not student athletes though.
I, I will say as a, Kelly said it much better than me, but as a parent, I would be livid if my senior got cut for a team that they played all three years. And just.
This is, I'm sorry to interrupt, I would say this is true, like if a senior comes out, it could be their first year playing too.
So we encountered this, this year where we had students decide to play, let's just say soccer, lacrosse for the first time ever and they were seniors. So they weren't allowed to be cut from the team and took slots from potentially other students. Varsity spots, they can't be on JV.
I would highly advocate, I would highly advocate for an adjustment to language to reflect that. I think if a student has engaged in the sport for a number of years and then would be unexpectedly cut as a senior, that would be devastating at a time in their life where I would actually worry about the social, emotional implications of that. However, I fully support the concept that someone cannot choose to enter as a senior and be guaranteed a spot, that a senior joining a sport, and, and I defer to you all, maybe it's a junior or senior, I'm open to how, I personally would be open to how you think about that, but if someone played freshman year all the way through or multiple years all the way through, that would be hard. I'll also just note that I, as I think through that, that would, in my mind exclude transfers. So, you know, someone who transferred in from another town, maybe it's a little different as well. But I just, I hear your point on someone walking on senior year and wanting the spot.
Can I ask why a senior cannot play on JV?
That's just an MIA rule. I think a lot of it too is like the age difference, the field difference, you know, if you have a senior and stuff like that. That's not a, I guess, on us rule. That's just an MIA rule.
And by no means do I mean my opinion to like, it's just my initial reaction is I would highly advocate for a language that addressed that scenario, but protected those who had spent a number of years playing within the OA realm on that sport.
And just to add on about a, a student coming onto a team that may never have played before, it also causes a safety issue.
Yeah.
They may not have the same background of the knowledge of the sport. So they could, they could potentially get injured.
Right.
Which we wouldn't want to happen. And we're not discouraging seniors that have never played a sport to, you know, never played at the high school level on the high school team, I should say. We're not trying to exclude them from, from joining, but these are some of the issues that I think the high school has dealt with in the past.
Right, which is, which is why I asked why they couldn't play JV? Because obviously if they're ta-, you know, they're obviously, if they're just playing for the first time, they're not, probably not gonna be a star player on the team. So JV would be a reasonable spot for them.
Right, but they can't.
But they can't. But if, I think if it was their first time playing for OA, then having them try out in a fair and equitable way makes sense. But if they have put in a number of years within the OA realm, then it would, I think, be very hard for them to be cut as a senior.
Definitely, can change that language. I think, I think that'll be a good, I think we're just trying to protect those situations too. Not how it's written.
So cap, can you see, oh, you can't see it now, Mary. Captain selection is up there now and it's just.
Oh, sorry, I can't see the, okay.
You can't see the slides anymore.
Thank you.
So this one has come up a lot since I've been here. So the basically previously or what it is currently is that the coaches have no say or discretion in the captain selection process and who the captains are of their teams. So what I proposed is on the next slide is, um, basically so the coach has some discretion as to who their captain will be. Cause I look at, you know, captain's a very crucial person for the coach to have and they lean on them greatly, you know, to relay, relay information to the team to get this team on the same page and be example of the expectations that that coaching program is looking for. So I think it can be very detrimental to the team if the proper people aren't selected by the kids. And I think it's a hard thing, like we try to educate our kids on, you know, what it means to be a captain, what it looks like, what the expectations of them would be. But in some cases, some of the coaches felt that it's been more of a popularity contest as opposed to being the correct person, that they, you know, can really use it, that liaison between the team and the coaching staff. And I personally feel puts the team and the coach in a bad position if, you know, the, the correct captains aren't selected. So that's kind of what I put in, but I, but I also do on the other side, think that, that the, the student's voice is very important. And I need, you know, we want to know what they think, who they believe should be captains, stuff like that and why, I think is a big piece. So kind of what I put in here is that any of the athletes that are interested in being captain, they need to, you know, write an essay or a paragraph or something to the coach explaining that they want to be captain, why they want to be captain, why they, what qualities they have that they would be a good captain. Um, I think that's an important piece to it. We go through the same process of they would be screened by the administration, make sure they had no suspensions, things like that. And that would put them on the ballot. Then they'd vote like they typically would vote, but that would be more of an advisory vote for the coach. So then the coach, once they get the advisory vote, could, could go with it like they typically do or, you know, could make adjustments if they feel that necessary to do so. So that would be the big, big change. So for the coaches that, teams that it's been working out great with who they select, awesome, they can still go with that vote, but this just allows again leniency so that the coach can have some input in those captains who selected. And don't just have to go with what the kids select if they don't feel it's a proper fit for their team or program each year.
Questions, comments on that one?
How do other districts do captain selection? What's the, what are the common practices for that?
A lot of them, I don't have an actual written way that every team has to do it. So some of them is just up to the coach's discretion, the coach can decide, they just name them. Some, you know, or they can choose to vote, like they do it differently for each, for each program too.
That's, yeah.
So not a lot of schools like us that has the.
Going through it now.
Formalized, yeah. So I wanted to try to create it so we can still keep a formalized policy because I didn't want to go like, I guess, you know, too rogue one way or the other. But I thought this is a good happy medium where we're still getting the kids' voices, we still hearing what they have to say, getting their input. But yet the coach still has discretion to kind of tweak that a little if they feel necessary. And they may not, like I said, some of our teams is so great and the coaches, like whoever got selected by the, by the team solely, the coach is like, yep, that's exactly who I was thinking, that's great. But we've had some instances where there are some, you know, I won't say conflict, coach doesn't think that, you know, this person's quite ready yet for what. So this is allows for that discretion and obviously I can work with the teams. I've done that in the past too with the number of captains and kind of work through those things, which is again allows for that leniency, so it's not, the coach has no say. I think it's, it puts the coach in a tough position to have no say of who's the senior leaders on their team. I think that's a tough position for a coach to, to be in.
If I, if I can just jump in that I, I really appreciate Director McDonald's desire to do this because I know in other districts, there's a lot of inconsistencies among the districts, but also among the teams within a district. Sometimes the coaches will name captains, sometimes the coaches will name a couple captains and then the kids choose a captain and it, and there isn't consistency. And I think that having, having a cohesive, cohesive process, the kids know what to expect. There's a lot of, of equity among that. I'm just thinking of, you know, a student who may have been on varsity since, you know, freshman or sophomore year, but may not be the most popular kid and may not get the votes. But the, the, the coach may know the maturity of that player and their knowledge of the game and what an asset they would be to give them that leadership experience. That's where I think, you know, and the kid may, may apply to be a captain, but may not get the votes from, from his teammates because, but, you know, for whatever reason. I just think it's a really nice opportunity for this consistency.
Colleen, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Absolutely, do you need a microphone?
Yeah, you need a microphone.
You're an audience member, you can participate.
As a previous varsity coach of two sports in a district, this is the first time I'm seeing the proposed change and our policy was two through four. And so seeing this and living it for seven years as a varsity coach, it is one of the most powerful processes, the way that it's up there. And it's almost verbatim what we did. And so seeing it here, and someone asked earlier what other districts do, this is very similar to a lot of districts in the area and how they go through the process. But I thought that information would just.
Some, not a lot.
But I thought it would be great just to share at least my background as a coach and seeing this for the first time, it's a, it's a powerful thing to give the kids the autonomy to, to make a decision like this.
Thank you.
So I have to, I'm sorry, I, I don't love it because either we let the kids vote or we don't. Because I feel like if, and I, I think all good things about the understanding that there's kids who need to have these leadership opportunities and it can turn into, it can divulge into a popularity contest, but if kid, they all talk. So if, if the students select two individuals and a third person is pulled in by coach's discretion, that, that student's gonna have a lot of trouble, I think, obtaining like the respect and the, the cooperation of their peers because they're going to, and the team's gonna feel like they were, the coach ran them over so that the, the vote was a farce. So I love the part about writing the letter and paragraph to the, to the, the coach and, and perhaps, and this is just me like thinking like perhaps the coach, that's where the coach has the input and says, based on the people who applied, these are the people I'm comfortable putting forward and then giving the kids the say so. I mean, I just, I just think if we let the kids vote, but the vote can be overridden, then there, why are we letting them vote?
Ask a question? I think, I think that the coaches and Mary feel pretty strongly that coach's discretion needs to be a part of this. So then how would we incorporate student voice? Because that's really a huge part, part of our mission.
Right.
At the high school.
Yes, I, I, I agree, I think they should have the voice. So I'm, I'm, that's why I'm wondering like if the first round is the coach, the, they, the coach vets whoever wants to apply based on this paragraph that you're having them write and says, these are the people who move forward and then the kids vote from there.
I think even writing the paragraph might naturally weed out some of the students that may not be on the coach's list. You know, my concern is, there's no perfect system, but, um, yeah. I, I don't really like the idea of teaching people that we give you your options and then this is what you vote for within our framework. Like that's not how the real world. Like the adults are essentially choosing your options and then you just vote from there. And it's like, that's not really how, in a lot of instances, like I feel like a lot of life is to some extent popularity contests and trying to be the best showing and being the best candidate and naturally winning over the people or having to work with the people you may not want to. You know, for example, like the step one, I think is great. I think it somewhat naturally weeds out the candidate pool. Two, I think in theory is great, you know, if there's any behavior that's, or school violations, but my concern there is there may be some students who have a record that have maybe turned it around or maybe this is what they are interested in and where they thrive in athletic leadership positions.
Negate you, just so you know, from being on, if you could have done, we, it's like our mantra at our school, that one bad decision does not define who you are. And so we want to see kids grow from that for sure. Just want to make sure I, 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 I share that with you because I think it's something we work really hard at, at the high school in all aspects. That one bad decision doesn't, never defines what you can and cannot do for your four years here.
I love that.
So I thi-, I, I'm almost, I'm almost wondering if I can make the analogy of, you know, recommending a, a search committee, right? Recommending applicants to the CEO of the company. Oftentimes they might put forward two, two candidates for one position. And I feel like in that sense, that's where the voting is, is similar in that sense, where the, the team is saying, this is our recommendation. These are, this, this is the order in which we voted. And then the, the coach makes the final decision based on his knowledge of, or her knowledge of the, of the player.
So maybe clarifying that, because the way, the way I'm reading it is the kids get to vote and then the coach says, yeah, I like your vote or no, I'm throwing it out and doing my own thing. And I'm just think, I'm trying to think like, like a teenager who's like, that's completely unfair. Why did you, why'd you waste our time asking us what you think? If you're gonna do what you want. But if it's framed that way, like here's the list of kids who applied, you guys can vote and tell us what you think, you know, all of, and then I'm gonna take all of your, your input and make a final decision from there. But do you know what I'm saying? Like I'm just, I don't disagree with your, the, the thought behind it. I just feel like as a seventeen or eighteen year old, I just know that my, my own kids would have been like furious, like this is, this is a farce. You're not really giving me voice if we vote and then the coach can do whatever they want.
Perhaps the coach could, um, the process could lead with the coach defining what they seek as a good captain in the process. So when the students vote, it's to also try to eliminate the popularity contest and say, I'm looking for a captain who will do these things. And so I ask you to vote accordingly, but at the same time, I may have to balance out the roster. But if the coach could state, if each coach stated what their definition of a captain is, like what they need from a captain, maybe that would also sort of help. Cause then the players respond in that paragraph. And even when they go to vote, the, the, those candidates who choose to explain why they feel they met that criteria could tell their team that. Like it's part of a leadership skill to define why I need that criteria.
Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, this is really just a very like strategic outline of what's in the handbook. The amount of conversations that happen between coaches and teammates when we go through this process. I mean, the coach and Mary even. I mean, the coach and Mary even, sometimes our weekly meetings, Mary and I, is talking about all of the meetings she had with captain candidates to talk through expectations, to talk through how the vote went, to coach, the coaches through the process. There is way more conversation happening than what's outlined in here for the sake of just clarity and brevity, I think. And it's something that we could add if that's, I think, right, Mary, like just some.
Yeah, like we talk, I mean, the, the coaches do like, I mean, they, like, um, what you just described, like they tell them what, what we're looking for in a captain. And I have that in the handbook, like what our captains' expectations are and stuff like that too. Um, this is more just the process. But I think some of them like, so like if I'm sitting in my office, like they're usually just, you know, like they could be voting and stuff like that. And I hear them in the hall waiting to meet with their coach and like, hey, if you vote for me, we, I, I'll vote for you. And like, you know what I mean? I hear it too. Um, so it's like not what we're looking for. And I mean, so like my background is in college athletics. So like how I handled selecting captains, like I met with every kid one-on-one and talked through, again, what do you, what do you think are good attributes of a captain? They tell me what, you know, and it was interesting always the answers. Because sometimes they're like, oh, it's got to be the best player on the team. It's got to be the person, like the, the oldest person, it's got to be this, this and this. So I think even at the college, it's a lot of educating these kids and I don't think they truly get what it means. I think a lot of them just like, I want to get it so I can say I'm captain and put it on my resume. You know, just because you're the best player on the team doesn't mean you're the best captain or it's a rule and you want to fulfill it. So I think some of, um, you know, that goes on and, um, you know, so then I would ultimately make the decision. Because I think it, I mean, if it was up to me, I think the coach should be the one, like if we're, you know, I believe in the student's voice, but I, I look at it, at the end of the day, the coach should be the one that kind of has that say. It's, it's their team. They want to have the person who's actually going to, you know, implement the things that they're looking to be implemented and be the spitting example of that. So it's like if someone, if the kids vote a kid who, you know, isn't going to be the example that the coach wants or doesn't believe in the philosophy that the coaches, you know, trying to get through the team, that's a hard position to put that coach in if he is, he or she has no say in that person. So I think that's what I was trying to get to a place where we, the kids have a voice, you know, and then we, the coach can get a feel of who the kids want, why they want them. Because I think sometimes on the other side, the kids could see something in, in their teammate that the coach may not see, you know, on the other side. So I, it's, I think it's important to get both sides. And so I was trying to come up with a way that we could kind of incorporate, like you said, the student voice, but also at the end of the day, the coach has a discretion to make sure it's the correct person that they feel would best serve the team and them.
It also does say on number three, players advise coach on captains by voting. So I think that that's the beginning of the, the explanation of that.
So Colleen, what do you think? Do you have some suggestions of different language you would rather say?
Yeah, I would, I would probably clean, clean up that third thing. I mean, I, I, just how it's broken down, like, and, and maybe like to, to your point before about the, the search committee, like just, just making a little bit clear. Because I'm also thinking this is like a parent reading this and it just like, I, I can just foresee like kids, kid, a kid is picked or they know they were picked by their peers and like the, the coach went another way. And probably for all very good reasons. But the, the way that's going to be perceived by kids and by families, like the coach just picked this one because they don't, they don't like my child or they didn't think this. And I mean, so I just think maybe really being explicit in the handbook, because the, the parents aren't going to be at all of the individual meetings with, you know, the coach and just maybe just really clarifying that the, the players will give input and then they will, they will make some recommendations. Maybe recommendations is a better word than advise. You know, they will, they can vote and they, their, their recommendations will be put to the coach who will have the ultimate, who will make the ultimate decision. I don't know.
Advice to recommend.
I really like the paragraph part though. That one, I think, I think that's great. Make them think, think it through before they.
Would you be open if we, after we go through all this, if we tabled the vote to the next, to the September fourth meeting? Would that be too late? Do you need to get this done before school?
No, because they won't vote on captains typically till, you know, later on. You know, because the ones for the fall are already set. So this would be, yes, that would be fine.
Okay. And that, and we could do it for, for both the, the handbook and this so that we can see the changes. Is that, is that okay with you? Okay. All right, thank you. I know you have more changes, but just wanted to interject that.
No, there's no more. No, there's no more. That's.
No, but I was.
Okay.
So, um, so what I'll do is I will, um, continue to have the twenty-four, twenty-five handbook posted to the website until we meet in September and then I'll send it out to families after your vote.
Okay. Is that, does that sound okay to other members? Is that?
It's great.
So, sorry, are we, just to clarify, is it the student athlete handbook that we're holding back on and not?
So it's this, the athlete, the athletic handbook is part of the? The student?
Handbook.
Handbook, yes.
It's one of the appendixes.
It's a link in the student handbook. So we kind of have to vote on it all together.
Okay.
So we'll table the vote on the, on both parts of it until the next meeting.
So we wouldn't have the adjusted clarified language on the ad drop? I'm just thinking about the students starting the year. I guess it's the day after they start, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, it's not too far for sure. And what I would say is that the language on ad drop, which is the one that's most impacted, the policy hasn't changed. But we just clarified the language to make it more.
Yeah. And, and I, I, I really appreciate you clarifying that language because I know there was some confusion and I was back and forth with you all. So I, I appreciate all of your help with this.
I appreciate your feedback and input on making sure that that was really clear. So it's helpful to us.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Do we need to vote to table?
Um, I don't, where is the, it says discussion and vote. And no, I don't think we need to vote to table. We can just have another discussion. It can just be put on another agenda. Because we had the discussion. We don't have to vote if it says vote. We can just not be ready to vote.
Okay.
We just can't vote if it doesn't say vote.
Got it. Can't vote if it says not to vote? If it says to vote? I got that. That actually made sense.
I just don't want, you know, Mr. Robert to come in. We brought, we broke his rules. Hi, thank you.
There's probably a lot of Roberts at this one. Thank you.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is the vote to approve annual contracts. Dr. Cabral?
The director, Kopaz, will present the yearly contracts, the annual contracts, excuse me. Uh, there are a series of them that are presented each year. And he will review the vendors and how, uh, how we go about determining who would have the.
Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. So I'm going to start with the WB Mason contract.
We're all screwed up.
I should have asked you which ones you had on top.
It's okay.
So again, these are, are, these are our annual contracts that have come before the school committee, multiple years in a row. The WB Mason is for all of our supplies. It is off the state OSD contract and that contract number is OFF five-three. And it's for the sum. Can I find it? Ninety-two thousand dollars annually.
It doesn't, um, can I just ask you a question while you're going through this? Because it does, it says this contract is for procurement of the following described the goods to be provided. So can you just go through with that?
I missed, I'm putting that in. It's all, it's all of our business office, uh, supplies.
Right.
That falls on me and that won't happen again.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Um, and then it also says, three point two says, um, fees and reimbursable costs combined shall not exceed ninety-two thousand as more set, as more fully set forth in the contract documents. Can you just clarify what that means? Three point two on the contract?
So that would be, that would be the contract itself. So we're not going to, we're not to exceed ninety-two thousand.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And if this were to be exceeded, we would bring that before the school committee?
So that number, Andrea and I worked on that number.
Okay.
So, um, I went to her and she showed me that this is what we usually spend and that's where we came with that.
And we have contracts with them every year?
Every year. It's a state contract that everybody uses.
Perfect, thank you.
So, um, our prior year contract was for how much?
So I can.
The contract last year was for how much?
I don't know what that was for. It'd be ninety-two thousand. That's what we, we spent last year. So I don't know, I didn't see that. So last year's contracts, they did not have a dollar amount on them.
I see, thank you.
Okay. They were just a two-pager and that's what was accepted in the past.
I see.
Okay. Moving forward, I'm going to make sure that you see what we feel we're going to be spending for that year.
Got it.
If we go over, then we got, I need to come to you and explain why I went over.
Got it. That is super helpful, Clariface. Thank you. So for each of the contracts you're presenting, you're using the amount that was approved in the budget?
Correct.
And you are putting a cap on them of shall not exceed so that we have that guaranteed.
Correct.
And if we, if we have to go above for whatever reason, there would be, there would also be the line change form that we would need to submit to you to explain where the money is coming from to exceed an agreement.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then just when you go through the other two contracts, if you can just describe the goods to be provided for each of those companies as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow this word right now. And tell you, you know, when you're doing so many of these, I've, especially when it comes to the cleaning contracts, it's just in my head, I know what it's for. So I apologize to all that.
That's okay. I just want your hair for just to find out.
Yeah, well.
While you're also going through for the other contracts, I'll just note too, um, it looks like the contract form is old and it has the old like public school address, um, in it as well. So just when you make the updates, you picked up a template that has.
So I will tell you also, the attorney looks at these and I've used that form.
Okay.
Okay, so I will go in and make that change. I get the forms from her and I.
I understand fully. Thank you.
So that was the contract for WB Mason. I am now, do you want to vote or go on each one or you want to?
Um, yeah, we're going to vote separately on each one. So I will take a motion to approve the contract with WB Mason.
With the noted edit.
With the noted edit? What noted, oh, the day, the.
The office supplies, the noted, uh, services.
With the office, with the, with the goods being described. Do I have a second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor? Great, next one?
I'm going to look at the Banner Systems, Inc. And I just want to make note, I will make sure that tomorrow, all the scope and what the items that are possibly purchased will be in that section on all of these.
All right, thank you.
And then I will ask Lynn next week, when she's back, to send you these so they're proper.
Okay.
Okay?
Where, what was the, what did you say?
At the top here, so the, at the very top of it, where it says the contract is intended to by Eastern Public, none of Eastern, Eastern Public Schools, it has the Spooner address is, oh, no, that is correct. It's the zip that I was looking at. Never mind, sorry.
Okay.
I got, I was thinking it was the other zip. Thank you, you caught me.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
It is the updated one. Never mind, that was me.
It's all right. So again, this is another contract. This is the Mihak contract, the Massachusetts Higher Education Consortium. Uh, G seventeen is the contract that we use every year to purchase our custodial, some of our custodial serve, uh, supplies from Banner Systems. And it's in the amount of forty-eight thousand.
This is the Amresco KC?
This is the next one.
That's the Banner Systems.
Oh, Banner?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Nope.
At the correct address. Yep.
And what is Banner Systems?
So Banner Systems is a janitorial supply, our custodial supply. We purchase trash bags, toilet paper, paper towels and other cleaning supplies from them.
I noticed that the next two contracts are both for the same dollar amount. Just confirming that's correct.
Yes.
Great.
That, that is not a mistake. That's.
Just double checking.
Any other?
Of course, I'm the one on the wrong address. So I'm looking at this address and trying to carry it across in my brain.
So we're doing things budget-wise a little different now.
Yeah. Yeah. Appreciate that.
So I will take a motion to approve the contract with Banner Systems. Second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor? Great. Next?
And then the last one is Aramco KC, again, forty-eight thousand dollars. And we purchase custodial supplies from them as well. This year, they're a fairly new vendor for us and they are also off the Mihak contract, G seventeen.
Any questions? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the contract with Amresco KC Maintenance Systems.
So moved, Loomis.
Second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor? Okey-dokey. Discussion and vote to approve the Konica contract. Now, we do not have this contract yet. So do you want to?
Sure.
So while, while work to Kopaz is doing that, uh, just can, can you hear me now, please?
Yes.
All right, I, I, I'm assuming that the storm is moving south because I heard it there earlier and now I think it's on my booth. So. So if you have any trouble hearing me, please let me know. Uh, so the part of our efforts to be as just as little possible as possible involves removing quite a number, in fact, almost a hundred printers from the school buildings and diverting our printing to copiers, which are far more efficient and less expensive. Not as convenient, but that's the wrap. The copiers that we currently have have been purchased by the district. And through the work that Tony has done, particularly with Libya, they put our needs out to bid, we'll review this information with you. We've determined that moving to a lease agreement is going to be more cost efficient for the district. And so I'll, I'll let Tony run that through with you. But if you have any questions about the difference between moving there, other than finances, we can talk about that.
Okay, so we went out to three vendors, Konica, our current vendor Core, and Xerox. Xerox did not reply. We reached out twice and we had one, she said yes, and we sent her the information and she never replied back. So we looked at Konica and Core. In doing the analysis of this, I just received the service part of the contracts from both companies. We met with both companies. Konica came in, did a full analysis of what our current machines do. Both companies are notified that we were going to be getting rid of the district printers that we have. And Konica did an analysis on, on that. Their monthly fee is five thousand, twenty dollars and seventy-six cents. Of an annual cost of sixty thousand, two forty-nine, twelve. Core.
That's their leasing fee? I'm sorry.
It's all leasing, yes.
Okay.
We're talking all leasing, leasing and it's based on the fair market value. We're talking all leasing, leasing and it's based on the fair market value and not a dollar buyout, which drives actual leasing prices.
Okay.
So Core, monthly fee is $4,584.46. Annual cost, $55,013.52. I'm going to recommend, and I'll explain why, Core over, correction, Conica, Core. Okay? The reason I'm going to recommend something higher is yes, both companies were responsive. But I do not feel that Core was reasonable. Again, we met with both of them. We told them both that we're going to be eliminating all the printers. And Core does not appear to come back with all the machines we need. And it does not appear they took into account that all the copiers are going to increase the usage. Because they're all going away. So that means now these big copiers are going to go away. Will be using more of the copies, right?
Printers will be going away with use of the copier.
Thank you. And so with that, Conica is looking at machines that can really handle that workflow.
So they're different machines that they were recommending?
Yes. So Core used a 70-page count where Conica's using an 80-page count. And that's not my forte, but I can tell you that's a lot of paper going through. Okay? So then we looked at the service agreements. Conica's service agreement is $4,625.27 with no incidentals. No staples, not paying for, we're not paying for anything. Not even toner or the, or colored toner. Core, $4,433.79. I took into account on Core, because it's in their specs, that they are still going to charge for staples.
So Conica was not going to charge for incidentals like staples or toner?
Or toner.
Okay.
Core is saying, I'm going to charge you staples. So today, I had the business office gave me last year's expense. We spent, oh, almost $24,468 on staples.
No kidding?
And some other incidentals. Some type of connection, I would say some type of computer connection. There is some other ancillary things in there as well. So we have a total of about $2,468 is there that I added in to as incidentals, since we're going to pay for it. Somewhere along the line, we're going to pay for it. So their total was $55,673.50.
Okay. Can you give me those numbers one more time?
I apologize, you don't have this.
That's okay.
In today's meeting, I've got Chrissy looking at me saying, pay attention, I'm trying to put this together, right? She walked by, literally walked by, getting online. So I'm like, I am, but... Anyway, so my apologies. So our service agreement of overall, again, Conica, $4,625.27. No incidentals. Core, $4,433.79. What is in that, also that price, is the cost of overages on paper, which is about $300, I remember correctly. So when you go over on what you say are 7 million pages, you pay per page after that.
So the lease agreement is it's going to cost this much to lease with the expectation that you're going to have this many pages?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And if you go over this many pages, you get an extra fee?
You get an extra fee.
And do both companies have that?
Yes, yes.
So, is it, Libia, did you share this or did you share?
Can you see on the screen? The spreadsheet on the screen?
No.
No.
It's coming?
Here it is.
Can you zoom in?
Hey, Libia, can you zoom in a little bit?
Nobody can see that.
Thank you, Libia.
Sorry, there seems to be a delay. I don't know if it's because of the storm. As I'm doing things, they're showing up a little bit.
It's all good. Thank you.
If you could zoom it in.
Oh, that's so much better. Thank you.
So there's the service agreements. Those are the, those are the two breakouts, lines seven and eight? That's the two numbers that Tony gave you?
Okay.
Oh, I see, yep, yep.
Okay. So it ends up being a 5K potential difference?
Correct.
But that could get eaten up by the number of pages because one, because Conica had 80 pages as the baseline and Core had 70.
Correct.
So if we went up the 10 pages per...
You're talking 39 cents a page for Core.
Okay. So if we go up the extra 10 per the number of printers, I mean, per copyers alone, that would eat up the 5K difference?
It could.
And also the incidentals?
Well, and more incidentals.
Because the incidentals are actually more when you factor in the staples.
Right. Well, that's where I got to the 5K all the way across. If you go line eight, Core, all the way across.
Right.
But they're using last year's incidentals and we're taking away all the printers, so the incidentals could go up.
Okay.
So right now it's 5K, but we have unknowns because we're taking away all the printers.
Exactly.
The number of pages and how many more staples and how much more toner. So the incidentals could go up. And then also we have more cushion with Conica because they run an extra 10 pages and they put more equipment in, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you can, yes, if Libia can scroll down a little bit, you'll see exactly how many. We've been slowly removing the printers from each...
Yeah.
But you can see the total of how many we are going to be, or they are going to be removing this summer.
Wow.
That's all increased usage on the number of machines that's above. And you can see it's six machines per school. So the volume is going to be greatly increased.
Yeah.
But it's important to note that by purchasing the copiers, having more copiers and less printers, we are saving a lot of money.
Leasing them.
Yes. So I just want to note that, that even though the cost of the copiers may go up, the overall cost of everything, because we're getting rid of the printers, will be significant.
The copiers that we have now, are we leasing them or do we own them?
We own them.
Okay.
We own them and they're at the end of their, or very close to the end of their useful life. And if you look, sorry, Libia, if you can scroll up a little higher, if we were, just, nope, sorry, lines 20 to 24, if we were to purchase, which we are, especially because of the volume that's going to be increasing, we're going to need to replace. You can see, even if we were to replace four a year out of the 28, five a year out of the 28, you can see that over a very short amount of time, we have almost $230,000 of equipment cost. One of the key things Tony did say that I'm just going to repeat is that Core basically, didn't basically, they literally took the type of machine we have now, not taking into account our plan that we shared with them, and said, for the same amount of machines, or actually, they didn't even include all of the machines, for a lower number of machines and for a much higher increase of volume, this is what we're going to give you. Conica, on the other hand, gave us better, or is planning to give us a higher capacity machine, better quality, without the potential of any additional costs and without incidentals. And they also put an increased volume because they know that we're going to be increasing the number of uses. So even though there is a very small amount of difference between the two, the reason Tony used the word reasonable is because when, in the purchasing, Tony, if you want to tell them the language, it uses the word reasonable in there. That's why, that's not his choice of word, that's actually...
That comes from MCTO.
Yeah, and I'm sure that Joe could chime in as well, not to put him on the spot if he was...
I already asked him, he looked at me and said, really?
I will say, I'm shocked that 104 desktop printers, they are very expensive.
Yeah.
Just so you know, we have been slowly removing them over the last few years. That is not how many we had total. As you can imagine, that is, it doesn't, it's not a popular move. I haven't had a printer...
Right, I don't have a printer.
About eight or nine years. But it's not a popular move among teachers. We are trying to keep things as convenient for them as possible with the amount of work that they are assuming. However, we're just not at a spot where that's possible anymore. And as Joe just said, these are more expensive to run and so we just can't, we just can't do them anymore. And so this is the, this is the rip off the Band-Aid year. This is, this is the kind of stuff that the staff is seeing. This is one small example of the many things that we're doing to cut the costs, that the staff is seeing that is increasing their workload potentially and that is contributing to the morale issues, frankly, that we've been having, that, that are going to keep increasing over time. And then eventually, basically, what we've been doing is the administration has been going without for quite some time. Now the staff is going to be out and then it is going to move to the students as soon as next year. Seeing that progression. And so what we have been seeing is going to happen is now happening. But yes, we're getting rid of all of the printers. This is, we are doing them slowly over the years, but this is the year we're getting rid of all of them, except for very, very few in some sensitive areas, like nurse's office, for example. But that's it.
And can I also add, just quickly, one of the benefits of moving from having the printers, so many of them, is that since the expense for toner is added into the contract, we no longer will have all these individual requests for payment for toner because we have quite a few requests that come in throughout the year and we're talking $10,000 at each go. Printers are not made to do high-yield jobs like what the teachers are currently doing. These are your basic, think about your basic desktop printer, if you still have one in your home. It's not made to run off a ton of copies or to print classroom sets of things. The other benefit is if we move fully to copiers, it allows for us to have print hold on all of the printing jobs, which means that if I, as a teacher, run something off, I go to the device, I enter in a code, and then I'm able to print it while I'm standing there. I don't have to worry about someone took it out of the tray and now it's been recycled or it's in the trash or I can't find it.
It's confidential information and other...
Exactly.
Can I ask a process question? What is your RFP process like? Like, why didn't you receive apples to apples in your responses from your bids?
So this is based on, well, this is based on contracts?
Why are you laughing?
The, it's all, it's all based on a contract, right? So Conica looked at state contract, Mihak, and Sourcewell. Core, they only looked at the state contract, okay? It's not over $100,000. So he needs a scope of work and that's what was issued to each, each company. We met with them, called them, met with them, and sent an email with all of our information, with the scope, and what we needed to do. And that, between 10 and 100,000, that's the process between that. Anything over 100,000 now turns into an IFB or an RFP, which now you have to put in the paper and do all that bidding.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just make an observation, I guess, which is the other factor that I would think goes into this is that we are not sending laptops home with the younger grades anymore?
I'm sorry, I don't...
Oh, sorry. I was just saying, the other factor I was thinking about in terms of our usage and how it could go up over the next year is related to the fact that we are no longer going to be sending laptops home to the younger grades. And so there may be more use of paper in those scenarios as well. So that would introduce additional potential variability on the Core contract and the use of staples and things like that.
That's a good point.
Could have a big shift as well.
So since we don't have the, are you looking for a vote to approve the contract? A vote to authorize me to sign the contract? What exactly are you looking for?
I wanted to get the numbers in front of you so I could see what we've been trying to do.
Okay.
And talking to the Conica rep, the vice president who does contracts has been overseas.
Okay.
And he's flying, his arms must be getting tired. He's coming home now. So as soon as they get here, I'll take the contract, get it all put together, send it to the attorney, and then bring it back in front of you. I think it's the best thing to do.
Okay.
But I really wanted to have, I want, go ahead.
Could I interject?
Yeah.
Yes.
Could I interject? So my only concern is that in thinking about how to best support our teachers, we still have to transition from our current machines that are not working very well and also pull all of the 104 printers out. It would be a much smoother process if we're able to do that before the month ends so that they are able to come back to really functioning machines that they can utilize to do what they need to do. So I don't know if we would be able to entertain either a vote to approve, to sign when there is a contract. Just because if we have to wait, that means that then we're not doing anything.
Right. You can imagine the amount of printing that is done by teachers at the beginning of the school year and they're going to be doing it on these printers if they don't have the copies. What we would ask you to entertain is a vote to approve these numbers, approve this. These, this proposal and the Conica pending the, as with the solar lease, pending the legal language being approved by town council.
Okay, so that we are, we are approving the...
The great, the award to Conica. The awarding of the contract to Conica.
And the, and the pricing and the lease?
For the chair to be authorized to sign the contract once, only if approved by town council.
So moved. Okay. So I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to award the contract to Conica and to authorize, Emilia's the chair, to sign the contract once approved by town council. Does that sound right?
So moved, Loomis.
Second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Opposed?
I'd rather read it before I vote, so...
Are you comfortable with Conica, with the analysis that was done?
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't sign my name to a contract without reading it fully first, so I'm not going to vote yes for it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next item is vote to approve no Adam and Wilson contracts. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Chrissy Pruitt, Assistant Superintendent over these contracts. I will note that in the no Adam...
That was, I was going to say that. No, 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 I'm laughing because I, because I, that was, that was going to be my lead, that Kelly must have read the no Adam contract to find that the address was incorrect.
Go right ahead. There's also one in Wilson. Do you have that?
Oh, I didn't see the one in Wilson.
Director of Finance.
Yeah. I was laying across all of them, so at least I found it somewhere, right?
Okay.
Sorry, go right ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm joking, I, um, I didn't see the one in Wilson, but I did see the one in No Adam, and I apologize for that, for that oversight. I think I, I skipped over that top portion as I, as I read through the rest. Um, so I just wanted to start off by explaining that one of our core responsibilities as a district is to make sure that every student has access to a rigorous, engaging, and equitable instructional, um, instruction. And we need to make sure that we are adopting and implementing what's called high-quality instructional materials. DESI uses the acronym, DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uses the acronym HQIM. So if you hear me refer, that's High Quality Instructional Materials. So if you hear me use that acronym, that, that's what I'm stating, HQIM. Um, and they, they're, they require us to use HQIM across all grade levels. Um, not only does it lead to academic achievement, but HQIM ensures all students have access to grade-level standard, um, standards-aligned learning opportunities. So what defines HQIM is, like I said, they're standards-aligned, it's evidence-based, culturally responsive, and it, it has comprehensive supports. In Easton, one of the, um, wonderful things that we do, our educators do, is they create their own units, um, of, or their own units using Understanding by Design by Jay McTye and, um, and Grant Wiggins. What they do is they write their units based off of the standards, and in Stage Three, we use the HQIM, which, um, designates the learning plan. So that the high-quality instructional material, so the high-quality instructional materials are the, are, what are the, the implementation of the lessons each day. We go through a very rigorous selection process whenever we are choosing curriculum, um, whenever we're choosing a program. We have to understand, going back to writing the units, is that programs are written for 50 states, they're written for multiple countries, so that's where we write the units, because we have to always adapt any curriculum that we adopt, or any program that we adopt, to ensure that it is a sta-, that we're meeting the standards, um, for Massachusetts, which, as you know, because we are number one in the, in the country, um, that we, our standards are much more rigorous than other, than other states. Um, our selection proc-, process is a very rigorous process. I've been fortunate enough to be, um, to have been a process of, at the elementary level, at this point, I will say all of them. Um, we have committees, we have pilots, we have, um, uh, you know, a voting process, uh, we look at price, we lo-, there's a lot of things that go into the actual selection process. And we have, right now, before you, the two contracts are programs that have gone through that selection process already. So these contracts before you are for No Adam, as well as Wilson. Um, No Adam is our science program K through five. It is a, an extremely rigorous program, um, that aligns actually very nicely with our literacy program. Um, they use similar instructional practices, they have, um, similar, um, uh, routines, that is a very nice transition for our students. Um, our science scores have increased since the implementation of No Adam, and not only in our elementary schools, but also in our middle school. Um, we're very proud of it, they, we continue with, with a high-quality professional development with our No Adam, um, program, and we are really excited about the outcome that we have seen from the implementation of No Adam. So that is the first contract that you see before you. It is a three-year contract, the quotes there are the anticipated costs. No Adam has been really great at working with us, because sometimes we will not get to units, and so we base it off of our inventory each year. So what you see in front of you is the maximum costs that we would, we would go to. However, for example, if we had, like, this year coming up, we have, um, we had a lot of materials left over from kindergarten, we, our, our schools do a magnificent job of inventorying those, so we won't necessarily have to order more magnifying glasses, or more, you know, more.
We use them the next year.
We do, we use them the next year, absolutely. Um, so what you see before you, like I said, is the maximum, um, cost, but, but oftentimes we don't have to actually get to that cost. Um, so that's what you see before you with No Adam. And then with Wilson, Wilson is complementary to our literacy program. This is, um, our tier-two, some of our tier-two supports, which are our interventions, that's Just Words, which you see, might see within that contract, and also part of our Phonics program for our literacy program, which is, um, our Foundations, which is in K through three. And that is the Phonics portion of our Science of Reading. Um, so tho-, that is about, you'll see the No Adam, um, contract is, runs about 97,000 per year, approximately, um, and Wilson is about 35,000 per year, approximately. How many years have we, have we been using the No Adam materials? Oh goodness, uh, we are in process, year, this will be year four of implementation. We started right before COVID. Okay. Um, and, and so, complete full implementation, I would say, would be year four. We started at the, at the grades three through five, um, more fluently. Okay. And then K to two has, has, um, implemented more recently. So what about Wilson? So Wilson, eh, we are in year, so Foundations, we, we adopted, when we adopted, Wit and Wisdom. Okay. Um, that is a nice complement to, to Wit and Wisdom. We have been implementing Just Words, which is a tier-two intervention that we're using in grades, um, four through eight. We, that, we're in year two of implementation of that. We actually received those for free when we first started implementing. Um, much of the cost was free because of, um, we were, we were piloting and providing resources to the company, they were running studies and doing research with us. Okay, did you have a question, Lauren?
I did. Um, you said that No Adam goes to fifth grade?
It does, it goes up higher, but we use it.
We use it for fifth.
For fifth grade, it goes through eighth grade.
What do we use sixth and over?
We use, um, oh my goodness, I'm blanking on what program we use, we use, yes, we use different programs.
Got it.
I'm on the spot here, yes, yeah.
Cause you had, you had, the reason why I asked was because you had mentioned that it's up until grade five, but then you had mentioned that our science scores have gotten higher through middle school. So I was like.
We're reaping the benefits.
Yeah.
Of a more rigorous science program, um, in the elementary school, so when they get to middle school, they are, they are, um, they're.
They're prepared.
They're prepared more, they have greater preparation.
Got it, but I just didn't know if it was, um, if it was a miss, if you, if you misspoke that it goes to fifth, when you mentioned middle school.
Right, right. Other questions?
Not that I doubted you.
I have two, do you have a question? Um, you had moved, so I thought we were. I have two questions, so one is, um, on the No Adam piece, um, you had mentioned about, um, that we reuse supplies, but my reading of this contract, the page that has the, at 16, um, says that there is a minimum purchase amount?
Mm-hmm.
So can you just provide a little bit of context on the minimum purchase amount?
Um, so it does say minimum purchase amount, that, that is what the ex-, that's essentially the expected cost.
Okay.
But we do go below it, we have in the past.
So would we not receive this discount then, that they articulate, if we did not, um, meet the minimum amount? I'm just reading the, the lines above that seem to indicate.
No, we still receive that. We still receive the discount.
It looks like from their language that may be challenging.
Sure.
So I guess I would just ask that, um, we confirm and clarify that, and that if it is financially beneficial for us to receive the discount by buying some materials in advance as costs go up year over year, we may just want to make sure we're making use of that.
Yeah, the other thing too, if you can, if you can see, um, I think they're taking into account that we do have consumables that we reuse, because the cost does not increase for each year.
Okay. And then I guess also, I'll just, maybe less of a, um, question, more of a comment on these, but I know that over the years, we've implemented a number of these programs, and the staff has done an amazing job of learning them and learning how to implement them, and writing lesson, lesson plans associated with them. And so even with, um, tough budget times where something like this could be called into question, I think it's critical to support the, not only the students in receiving the high-quality materials, but also the staff to not have to continue to make changes.
Correct.
Um, you know, obviously, we're receiving great educational success from this, but then also, there are lesson plans that have been learned, implemented, and refined based on using these materials, so the continuity, I think, is critical for the continuity and equity across, um, students receiving such a good education.
Great point, thank you.
Appreciate that, and just wanted to.
And, and our science units K through five, uh, were completed this year, and so, again, if we had to switch a program just for a lesser cost, um, the units would have to be rewritten, uh, the Stage Threes would have to be, not, not the others. However, the other thing to point out is, um, a lower-cost curriculum doesn't necessarily mean a high-quality curriculum. Um, one of the reasons why we don't have to go out to bid for this is it is considered a sole provider, a sole source provider. Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I will take a motion to approve the No Adam contract with the, um, correction of the address.
Uh, so moved, Percy.
Second?
Rather second.
All in favor? Thank you, um, and I will take a motion to approve the Wilson contract, um, do they have, do they need a?
Yes, they got an address.
All right, would the address change?
Sure. Percy, uh, so moved, Percy.
Second?
Hamilton, second.
All in favor? Great, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Pruitt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, buckle up, minutes are coming. Got a lot of them, all right. So, we're just gonna try to get through these, um, we have some regular session minutes, and then we have some executive session minutes. So we'll start with regular session minutes. We're gonna start with the regular session minutes of Thursday, June 26, 2025. Does anyone have any comments or corrections? Nope, then I will take a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, June 26, 2025. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Percy, a second.
Thursday, June 26, 26, 25, okay, great, all in favor? All right, next. Regular session minutes of Thursday, July 10, 2025. Does anyone have any questions or corrections?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, July 10, 2025. Do I have a second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor? Next, the regular session minutes of July 16, 2025. Any questions, comments, corrections? Okay. You're good? Yes, sorry, I had to just. No, it's fine. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of July 16, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? Great, all right, executive session minutes, so, if anyone has any comments, questions, or corrections on any of these, just speak up and we can hold them. So the first one is the executive session minutes from March 19, 2025. The only thing I'm gonna say about this is that the title needs to be changed to specify that these are executive session minutes. Does anyone want these held for anything?
I do.
Kelly, was it Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, hold. Okay. Too much paper. Okay, hold on one second, hold. All right, the next set of executive session minutes are from April 8, 2025. Does anyone want these held? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of April 8, 2025. Do I have a second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor? Jim, did you raise your hand?
Uh, I'll abstain.
Okay. Okay, the next executive session minutes are of, um, April 17, 2025. Does anyone want these held? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of April 17, 2025. Do I have a second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor?
I'll abstain.
Abstain. Next set are, um, executive session minutes of April 25, 2025. Does anyone want these held? Okay, I will make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of April 25, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
Thank you, all in favor?
I, I was not present, so I'm looking for your word, your kindness.
Lauren, yes? You, you wanna abstain?
I wasn't there, no.
I accept them if you all cover it after, I cannot turn yours.
Okay. Executive session minutes of May 8, 2025. Does anyone want these held? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of May 8, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
Thank you, all in favor? Minutes of May 22, 2025. Does anyone want these held? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of May 22, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? June 3, 2025. Does anyone want these executive session minutes held?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, I think these can be released, they can, so I'm gonna make.
It's already public.
Rate 6.3.
Hold on, at this point.
On the other side, let's see. Yeah, there's some stuff on the other side.
That has to be held.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of June 3, 2025. Do I have a second?
Percy, a second.
All in favor?
Jackie, there's a edit on the insurance that might also.
Yeah, thank you. All right, executive session minutes of June 12, 2025. Does anyone want these held? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of June 12, 2025. Do I have a second?
I believe that these should be held.
Okay. What? Um, do I, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes of June 12, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
All in favor? Lauren? Colleen, Kelly, anyone voting?
I thought there was an edit, so I apologize, I thought there was an edit.
That's okay.
Well, present, present, presence.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of the edits.
I thought there was an edit further down.
Oh, okay, is there another one?
Just double check, I'm, just double checking.
All right.
So, I don't.
Okay, why don't we hold these? We can review. Yeah, so the minutes, the executive session minutes of Thursday, June 12, 2025 will be held. Okay, so we will review those at a future executive session, thank you. So the next item on the agenda, where's my agenda?
MAS resolutions.
Yes, the MAS resolution, so. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, or MAS, has a delegate assembly where the members vote on public policy priorities. All priorities have a three-year lifespan and must be reauthorized to remain a MAS policy priority. There are six resolutions that are set to expire this year if they are not reauthorized at this year's delegate assembly. You all have them. If we want to support one or all of the resolutions, we must pass them by vote, and then we notify MASC. Not gonna read them unless you want me to. I'll just give in kind of a summary, unless, what?
Are you sure that's the process? Because I think it's we vote and agree that one of us or whoever goes to the assembly will represent us.
Well, that wasn't on the agenda, so I'm gonna put that on the next agenda to vote for somebody to be the representative at the delegate assembly. But whoever is the representative has to know how the school committee feels about these.
Right, but it's not giving a call to MASC and letting them know. It's voting at the assembly.
Okay, okay, okay. So the first one is Resolution 1 is Regarding Sanctuary Laws for Transgender Students. This was sponsored by the Lexington School Committee and co-sponsored by Worcester, Somerville, Grafton, and Franklin School Committees. And this resolution is calling on this legislature to pass sanctuary law which ensures transgendered children and their families a safe environment of protection in the areas of HIPAA law, mental health, and medical care. So does anyone have any comments on this resolution?
I would like to support it.
I would support it as well.
Okay, so I will ask for, I'm gonna ask for a motion to support Resolution Number 1.
So moved, first you.
Do I have a second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. So Resolution Number 2 is to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. So currently, we can put aside in a Special Education Reserve Fund 2% of annual net school spending for unanticipated special education costs. This resolution would increase the cap to 5% of net school funding. Dr. Cabral, do you wanna talk to us a little bit about our reserve fund that we have?
Sure, the reserve fund is that it's controlled by the town meeting. The money that is put into it needs to be approved at town meeting, and any use of it needs to be approved at town meeting as well. It also has very specific uses. It's really for unanticipated tuition primarily. We talk a lot about how mercurial that is. It's based on student need. And we've also talked about how the fact that one student residential out-of-district tuition can be a quarter of a million dollars on the way. And so currently, we have $250,000 in a special education reserve. The intention when this was allowed some years ago, this was never an option, but the legislature allowed this. And some years ago, we were able to put some money into this at the end of year, with end-of-year funds. And we've done that a couple of times. We have not been able to put it for several years. This has had a decline in our, of the amount of funding that we need. This, we do not, we're not even close to 2%. Like I said, we have $250,000 in there currently. We most likely cannot get to 2%. So this does not affect us at this time, but certainly you can imagine that if a district, and should it be Easton in the future, is able to put that kind of money into. Excuse me. It would be extremely advantageous. Like I said, it can only be released with town meeting approval and only for very specific uses of unanticipated expenses in special education. It's a great thing to be able to have. We can't right now, and probably won't for some years, but we would support increasing it.
Any comments from committee members? Yeah, I think, obviously, we can't do it, but I think this would, this is gonna be very helpful for some districts and hopefully for us in the future.
Agreed.
So I'm gonna ask for a motion to support this resolution.
So moved.
So I have a second, that's fine, second?
First you, second.
All in favor? Resolution Number 3. Membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. So this board has broad powers to set education policy and enact regulations, among other powers. Currently practicing educators and city school committee members are prohibited from serving on this board, which makes no sense to me. This resolution calls for the enactment of legislation to repeal that provision and to enact legislation to reconstitute the board by including experienced educators and members with expertise in school governance.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Pruitt, Dr. Cabral, I don't know if you have any feelings on this?
Yes. As you can imagine, it's not impossible for people to be outside advisors, but it, just prohibiting it altogether is counterintuitive. You miss the expertise of people that are in the field and currently in the field. We would support it just so that they have the opportunity to serve on the boards.
Committee members, any comments?
I'm very interested in your thoughts.
I don't understand why they can't, that seems foolish to me.
I know, like, it is counterintuitive. People who know what they're talking about, right.
It's foolish.
Yeah, okay. So I will take a motion to approve Resolution Number 3. Yep.
So moved, Loomis.
Yeah.
First you, second.
All in favor?
Educators on the Desi Word, I'm all in.
I'm tired. Okay, Resolution Number 4. Preserving Local Governance of Massachusetts Schools. So this has to do with schools in receivership and requesting that the MASC legislator restore local government governance for certain districts and to enact legislation to limit any future state takeovers to a term of no more than three years. Thankfully, this does not apply to our district. However, be interested to know if you wanna support this.
I have a question.
Right now, it's typical of Polioke and Selford, who are, have been in receivership since 2011, 2015, and 2016.
That's a long time. Jim, did you have a question?
I guess part of the resolution that might seem confusing is restore local governance and accountability no later than July 1, 2023.
I know, and I went on their website to look this up to see if there'd been any changes, and there haven't been.
Right, so are we voting, do we retroactively do that?
It's not, that isn't clear, because I couldn't find any language about that on their website. Dr. Cabral?
Yeah, so sorry. So these are, these are the resolutions that are set to expire, and you're determining whether you want them to continue. So they, you typically are active for three years. A resolution will be active for three years unless more than one district expresses interest in them continuing. That's why it's 2023, even though it's 2016.
So when it was, when it was.
This is when it was written.
Written, it was.
Probably 2022.
Right, but it hasn't.
Right, so it's set to expire in 2025, unless you and other school committees want it to continue.
So do people, how do people feel about supporting this?
I, sorry, no, go ahead.
No, please, please, go ahead.
I don't think receivership has been particularly successful in the Commonwealth. I think even in districts where we saw a bump in test scores and other metrics, I think as soon as the state pulled itself out, they took their funding with them, and then you wound up right back in that same position. So I, and I strongly disagree with removing local control of giving parents and families the say in what's happening in their local schools. I don't think that's well, I think it was well-intentioned to do receivership. I do not think it has given us what we wanted, and I would not advocate for that to continue in any district.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm gonna say I feel like that was a very helpful education, because I'm not close enough to it to understand the implications of it, that I would feel comfortable even weighing in on the pros and cons. I don't feel experienced on it.
Yeah, I don't think it's relevant for Easton, so I don't think that.
You don't think we should vote on it?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay.
The next one's my favorite.
It's Resolution 5, Personal Financial Literacy Education. So MASC is looking to file legislation that would, or ask that there be legislation that would require that all students have exposure to personal financial literacy curricula. And I was gonna ask Mrs. Kavanaugh if she was here, maybe Dr. Cabral, Mrs. Pruitt, no. Is that required in our high school students right now?
It's a elective.
It's an elective, okay.
We had this conversation last time.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
I remember distinctly, yeah, I remember distinctly discussing this.
Yeah, so does anyone have any comments on this resolution?
I love it.
I believe that we, because we do make it available to students, I think we, as a district, have some intentionality with it, but I love the idea of putting this forward across the state, because I think that would create equity for many students.
Jim, were you gonna say something?
I think it's always a double-edged sword, right? It would provide equity across the state, but it is just another potentially unfunded.
Mandatory.
That could pull resources from other curriculum.
Fair.
That's the problem, I think.
Where you see it, yes, where you see the actual resolution, therefore be it resolved, just the wording of it, and I'm not suggesting you vote one way or the other, just because, of course, we all think this is a wonderful idea, but it would be an expense depending on how it is rolled out. It does say ensuring that all students have exposure, and it would depend on the interpretation of that. Mandatory for all students, for example, the computer science that has been impending legislation from time to time is a mandate that all students receive computer science. We certainly agree with that, but we have one teacher who just needs to computer science. You can see the financial impact. So again, just information, not nation of whether to vote or not.
And just to echo Dr. Cabral and what Jim was saying is that the intentionality, I think, is there, but I worry about what, especially in our budget current status right now, what the impact would be for our high school classes. Would, something would have to be cut if we were to have it be, you know, if we interpreted it as that every student had to take it, something else would have to be cut.
I believe last time, to that point, we ended up deciding. We ended up choosing not to support this.
Okay.
May I ask, could we, as a district, make it a requirement for ourselves? Okay, if we, so, that flexibility?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we determine that it's an elective, but also that there is some program that students do go to to help with exposure and awareness? I thought there was like a day where they, I'm gonna get this wrong, but Dr. Cabral's nodding, because I think she knows what I'm hinting at. Thank you, so I'll just let you explain it better than I do. There's like an event that students participate in that helps.
Yes, it's actually really interesting. I cannot tell you if it is completely made or if it's happening this year, but it's a wonderful event where students, it's a real-life event where students literally go into a college space, and then there are multiple providers around, and they are given a job with a salary. They then do things like decide if they wanna go to college, and then they have to figure out how much it's gonna cost, decide if they have a house, how much it's gonna cost. They literally spin wheels, and it says, you know, medical bills, unexpected medical bills, and then you have to add that or, get the idea. I wasn't prepared to talk about it, but.
Sorry.
No, no, but it's, it is, it's actually a really great event. I wouldn't say it's necessarily, it's certainly not a financial literacy course. It doesn't cover all the things that are listed here. This goes into, you know, talking about the impact of student loans and things of that nature, which are obviously really valuable and important, and often taught in homes now, so we see the need for it. But yeah, so it's a great, for juniors, it's a great program put on by the business department. Again, I don't know if it's running this year, but I believe that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's called Credit for Life.
Okay.
And we had it at Stone Hill one year. They hosted us. We have not had it since COVID.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we want to just?
Oh, I'm sorry, it says we do, I'm sorry, we do it with the 11th grade every year. I thought we had, I thought that we didn't do it. There was a gap.
Okay, I thought we were doing it again. I thought that came up in the last session.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay, I thought we did it.
So should we just not vote to support this, and we just won't speak up on this?
I think because, I think Jim's point was incredibly valid and seems to be supported, that, you know, there's financial implications if this were to become a mandate that we really can't support at the moment. So I would not vote to support it.
Are you good with that, Lauren?
Sure.
Okay.
It's too bad, but, yeah.
I think there's gonna be a lot of two-balls coming up. Resolution, oh, wrong one. Resolution 6, Establishment of a Regional School Assessment Reserve Fund. So this does not apply to us, so.
Why don't we skip these?
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on this.
Does anyone?
Okay.
Another one.
That was fun.
Discussion and Vote on Legal Services Agreement. So this is, I'll turn this over to Dr. Cabral, but I just wanted to say what I, the two documents in here are to show you the current contract we have right now and the proposed. So, Dr. Cabral?
We have been working with Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller literally for decades. I'm aware of three decades, so, 24. The institutional knowledge that has come with working with the State Department and key of the attorneys from that person, Alan Miller and Rebecca Bryant and Tyler, has been extremely helpful. They have been reliable. Their advice is conservative, which has been conservative to us well over the years. We do have principal attorneys that we work with, Rebecca Bryant specifically for labor relations, but also Nancy Nichols for special education. The benefit of working with the firm in general is that they have, what I'm saying, maybe I'm sure it's not accurate, but specialists in each area. There are many different areas of law that we work with on a daily basis, whether it is labor needs, litigation, special education, contracts, professional development. In fact, we've had some of the attorneys from the firm just provided professional development with over 100 slides on the legal responsibility of our building administrators or things that we've been talking about and reporting. When laws changes, when there are nuances to laws, we go with them for legal filings. Like we recently met with them about the Ramoud case that we were discussing. There were just so many things that we need updates on, certainly not to mention collective bargaining, which is what most people are probably there with. This contract, we had just a flat retainer for decades, and it changed very rarely and not much. It's actually shocking that it didn't. The last contract that we had, this will be the second with their contract in this format, it is the retainer format for attorneys that we work with and all of those. It covers the guidance that they provide, phone calls, letters that they write, participation in things like collective bargaining. It does not include anything extraordinary like arbitration or certain actions that take place, or if they want to represent district at MCAD, for example. Fortunately, those things aren't included. But the retainer is for flat $80,000, and then there is what I'll call sort of a brace period. We get notified at $80,000, because they do, they do still keep track of the hourly rate, and when it gets to $80,000, they notify us in writing. And then between $80,000 and $100,000, we continue in the retainer format. Once we hit $100,000 in one school year, we then pay for hourly services at a rate of $230. $230. We have exceeded the $100,000 rate, particularly in negotiations years. I did try and was successful in the last contract cycle of separating our major bargaining units into two different negotiating years, which helped to integrate this to separate. We had the EEA, three units of EPA in one cycle, and then we had the EAG in another cycle. However, because of the unknowns with the impending vote on the override last year, we did need, we did find it necessary to negotiate with the EPA for a one-year contract until we could see the big difference whether we got the override or not. Obviously, we did not, and so now we need to negotiate the contract. So the six bargaining units are now in negotiation here once again. We will endeavor to try to move that to two separate years, but I would anticipate we will most likely go over the $100,000, and so we have budgeted for about over that in the next contract, I mean, excuse me, in the next fiscal year. But this is gonna be a three-year contract, and one of the things that is really important about this too is that the rate doesn't change over this three years, so it's fixed three years, a fixed rate for a year. I would strongly encourage you to vote for this. It is extremely fair, and helping with other districts, a lot of them have to be on regular hourly rate, or they don't have the benefit of the firm, but really a cadre that we need. So we feel very fortunate in that, and mind the, as I said, the institutional knowledge that they bring and the things that they are able to recommend, knowing their history and these things, and where things have evolved, where they've come from, the genesis of why certain things have happened, been extremely beneficial to us.
Questions or comments from committee members? Okay.
I will just.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I did note and appreciate, we have, we do have in front of us the copy of this year's contract, and it is the same rate. So it's not really held to the same rate for the three years, but it is the same rate that we paid this year, the 240. So it is, that's basically a four-year lock-in. And I do agree with your points at this point, if we were to find someone else, the amount of money we would spend getting them up to speed on them would be incredibly detrimental and expensive. I just support this.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion to approve the legal services retainer agreement with Stoneman Chandler and Miller.
So moved for CEO.
Do I have a second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, schedule of payments. We approved warrants, 083S, 085S, 088S, 087S, 004S, 009S, 008S, 089S, 089S, 010S, 005S. Public comment? Yes, Mr. Davidson?
It's right here.
Please just state your name and affiliation for the.
Of course, Greg Davidson, resident of Easton. School committee members, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight about the open assistant principal job at Easton Middle School. It plays a critical role in the overall operation of the school. Tonight, I'm speaking as a resident, but more importantly, as the director of special services and a member of the leadership team in the district. A second assistant principal is not simply an extra set of hands. It is an investment in instructional leadership and daily systems that keep our school running effectively. With over 800 students and a diverse range of needs, our building demands leadership that can balance day-to-day management with the deeper work of providing high-level student supports and instructional leadership to improve our teaching and learning. One of the most valuable contributions a second assistant principal brings is the ability to coach teachers through the educational evaluation process. This isn't just compliance. It's about meaningful feedback, professional growth, and supporting our educators so they can deliver the highest quality instruction to our students. During the most challenging budgetary process I've been through in my professional career, our leadership team believed the need for this position was so great that we included it in the FY '26 budget. This decision reflects the collective understanding that this role is not a luxury. It is a necessity for the success and sustainability of our school operations and instructional leadership. This role also strengthens the systems and planning that allow the building to run smoothly. Everything from student support to scheduling and the ever-growing changes in compliance at the state and federal levels, all of these allow the principal to truly serve as the instructional leader of the building, focusing on the vision, instructional improvements, and the district-wide initiatives we are all working on. In short, a second assistant principal ensures that no one is forced to choose between managing the building and leading the building. It allows us to operate proactively rather than reactively, and it raises the level of support for students, staff, families alike. Thank you for your consideration and for recognizing the importance of this position and the success of Easton Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. If you're also speaking as a resident, would you mind stating your address for the record?
Seven Brenner Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Crossman?
Still getting on the mic?
Yes, please, and please state your name and address.
Adrian Crossman, 25, Summer Street, Easton, Massachusetts. I apologize for my beard. I've just been the last 15 days with 14, 12, and 13-year-old Easton baseball players playing in Cooperstown, and I would just get back from the World Series in Missouri, so that's why I look like this right now.
That's quite all right.
And so prior to that, prior to that trip, though, I've just been a fantastic search for assistant principal at the middle school. I've met a lot of awesome candidates who would bring a lot to the district, and when I left for the vacation, I thought I'd return to assistant principal. So I didn't. So I wanted to come tonight, not necessarily to give you a laundry list of what I do as the assistant principal at Easton Middle School, but just to kind of, you know, I guess, put out there, you know, why I think it's fantastic that Easton Public Schools has three administrators at the high school, three administrators at the middle school, and, you know, I would hope that, you know, soon there'll be three administrators at Land James and three administrators at IRO, because, you know, they're certainly doing, you know, all the same work we're doing, just with different-sized kids. You know, so the number one, and our, as we, I'm gonna use the word we, we as assistant principals, our number one job is to be visible, right? So the number one way that we can ensure that the students and the teachers and the staff members feel supported is by being visible. So that's a lot of time, so in the driveway in the morning, that's a lot of time in the hallways, that's a lot of time in classrooms, that's a lot of time in the cafeteria. It's a lot of time just being out there, being visible, so everybody knows that they have access to us, because we're, you know, we're not with the kids all the time, the teachers are. So we gotta, everyone needs to know that we're visible, we're accessible, and that's how we support, you know, the school. Now, unfortunately, there's other things to do, right? So, you know, while we're being visible, and we have to do all these things, right? You know, the few things I'm talking, these aren't options, right? These all gotta get done every day, five days a week, right? Sometimes on the weekends, too. So, you know, we as assistant principals are dealing with behaviors. Now, some of those behavior incidents can, you know, it's a meeting with a student, a phone call, some of those can last several weeks. Some of those can involve investigations like bullying, civil rights, Title IX, that involve, you know, a lot of man hours, right? These things have to get done. We're members of 504 committees, right? We had those up, we're members of school-based committees like SST, we're members of district committees like professional development committees or search committees for other employees, and, you know, these are things that have to be attended. They have to, it takes a lot of time. You know, and we're in charge of other things that maybe you don't see, like we ran intramural programs at the middle school last year. We had 50 kids playing intramural basketball for four weeks in the winter time. We had 50 kids playing flag football in the springtime. We ran those after school, so. And all this stuff needs to get done, right? So it behooved me to stand up as the assistant principal at the middle school to say that, you know, it's, you know, we're lucky to have three, right? Because these are all the things we do all the time. High school's lucky, we're lucky, and hopefully those other schools, you know, soon can, you know, be fortunate in that respect, too, because, and, you know, the last thing I'll say is that, and that is not even to take into account that principals' jobs these days are so complex that, you know, two assistant principals are, Mr. Cabral's the CEO of the school, right? He takes care of so many things, he attends so many meetings, he meets with so many stakeholders, right? He provides us with so many opportunities through his hard work. You know, we gotta be the boots on the ground to make sure that he feels supported, too, so that's it. It's late, I talked too much, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
I do have a couple of items. In light of the comments, however, I will, will speak about the assistant principal position. I have not, and I won't ask the committee to vote on this. It wouldn't be appropriate, of course. However, I think it's really obvious, and just in case it hasn't, I'll reiterate where my viewpoint is. Be absolutely.
I'm sorry. Alicia, your audio keeps going in and out for us, so.
I apologize. It could be the storm. I'm sorry if I said. How was this? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll just, I apologize to the guys with my face.
It's all good.
Try to project here. This position is absolutely critical in my professional experience and education. I cannot underscore it enough. I completely understand where we are at, maybe more than anybody else, where our financial difficulties lie and what our priorities should be, and that's our student. With that said, this is not only a safety issue, in my opinion, it is also a liability I realize that there are many people in the community that do not understand, it's good day, it's not their, it's not their job, I get it, the absolute critical role that administrators play in the building, even if the population of educators is decreasing, even if the student numbers are decreasing, because the complexity of the goals, the complexity of the requirements, the complexity of the needs of our children are increasing dramatically. There is no question, and I would never discount the fact that adding two, five students to a class is more work for educators. There's absolutely no question. We try to avoid that at every possible. However, absorbing the responsibilities, the duties, and roles of full-time people to other people, literally taking on 50% of another, of a role, or 100% of someone's role, in addition to the core role, in this day and age with what we know are the needs of the students and the needs of the educators as their roles become more complex and their needs are going to be heightened. Feedback on the evaluations that they need for support as we barf on MTSS and he'll try to do. The, just the way that society is engaging with one another, the way that parents, even some community members engage with members of the staff, it's all because it becomes far more complex. We endeavor to share the data, the numbers, the factual information, as well as the technical information, what our experience brings. We have been, almost every member of the leadership team has been a building, myself included. We instantly understand the role, and we are very aware of how it's evolved. There is no value added to us personally, adding a role of this nature. I think you can hear, hopefully you can hear how passionately we are advocating. This is not a, it's not a value statement of who's more important in a building. It's nothing like that. We sacrifice at the administrative level first. The mantra that we are top-heavy is simply not true. We have the numbers to show you, and I've shared them, it's simply not true. And the level of service to our kids is going to suffer. And when I say level of service, I'm talking about what we are able to prevent from happening, what we are able to proactively provide so that we don't have physical altercation in building, including incident to the extent we have had them. We can intervene. We can provide the academic and cultural assistance that is necessary. We can help provide the social emotional support for the students. Again, we're not asking, I'm not asking for vote, but we are now about to start this school year, and I am prepared to authorize Phil Carroll to vote if he has a qualified candidate to fill this position. And I feel that it is critical for our operations with the ground, for the leadership team, which I serve the leadership team as much as I serve anybody else in the state. I will say that it has also taken a significant hit when the very nature of their job is being questioned, and their professional opinion in being with this position is being questioned, which we are open to scrutiny. Excuse me, that is, that is what we do. But I would very, very emphatically ask, if you are willing, ask for the committee's support in us moving forward with this protocol. Again, it's not a comparison, it's always more important. The fact that it has sort of been pulled into that realm is unreasonable and it's inaccurate. It's comparing apples to oranges, and it has taken the conversation away from a fact-based, a meat-based, unfortunately. Now, only because I'm online, I'm able to see that we have five administrators who are actually on this Zoom. I don't know if they're here because they want to speak, but we recognize your questions, so nothing about their names. But if you are interested in hearing from anyone, or feel that helpful, anyone that is willing to see, we certainly can allow them to. I will only name Mr. Carroll, because I do see him here. So if you had any specific questions from him, and if this is not typical of superintendent notes, so certainly would be at your discretion. But on behalf of leaders of this district, I would ask the board of the community, these people are very important, well-betted, well-thought-out, very seriously considered recommendation that we should make.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Cabral. So this is a little, I'm not really sure. this is a little, I'm not really sure how to proceed. What I can think of in terms of if any committee members want to speak about whether or not they support this role, they could do that in the school committee comment section along with whatever other comments they have. As for having, um, you know, normally we don't have people who are Zooming and be able to participate in public comment. If there is an administrator to this district that wants to supplement something in superintendent notes, I, I mean, I think, I think that would be okay. I mean, we're kind of, I, I'm, I'm kind of in unknown territory.
Agenda item? Like, why is this coming up now?
Yeah, I mean, this is an agenda, not an agenda item, which is why we're not gonna vote, or even, I'm not even gonna ask for consensus or anything, because we can't. I'm just saying, if in public comments you wanna give an opinion, you can, you don't have to. I, I just don't think I can ask, I don't think I can ask the school committee to have a a show of support for something that's not on the agenda, other than them just providing comments in their school committee comments if they want.
That's fine, I understand. I, I'm exercising superintendent notes to inform you of, of my intention as the superintendent. And would request your support going forward. In terms of other notes, I appreciate your, um, your permission for me to be able to offer candidates over Step Seven for very hard-to-fill positions. And I assured you that I would do that and know about any positions that have been hired above Step Seven. I can tell you that there have been two. One is a special education program teacher for a very hard-to-fill position. Limited candidates were fortunate to get a teacher in the program. And I did offer that teacher the salary over Step Seven based in their experience. I worked full-time with the contract, which only allows, uh, commensurate experience with years, uh, sorry, commensurate steps with years of experience. And I followed that exactly and offered them the steps that they earned based on their experience. Second was teacher of the year. This is a particularly, uh, is a particularly good for us. And I credit Director Davidson with being able to attract such a qualified candidate. This is actually going to save us, meaning we were happy with the few of the depth. And we were contracted out through service to have that person provide services in the district. Having them here for a time is actually less. We're obviously putting out the, uh, the search to provide, uh, the company. We actually have needs for basic, but the, we offered, or I offered the position as a full-time position because the, um, need in the district, we will definitely get used of, of the point, excuse me, the point four. And the options that I provided to the student that we hired, that she was emphatically interested in were number one, to temporarily and at first do a audit of our program. Not only the program, but the materials that we're using, the devices, uh, they are outdated. She is going to review all of the technology that we use and advise us on how we can provide better service for our students and me. She also has agreed we will be able to contract out to other districts. If, once she finishes that, she will be able to, uh, other districts that maybe have a point two or a point three contract with us, we'll have the service. She does agree to that. The third is that we're trying to creatively think of other ways that we could benefit our students. And, um, one thing that I have for years really wanted to make part of our programming, but have been unable to, because of budget constraints, is to have an ASL or American Sign language where we're, as I said, and she has, um, she's a very interested in providing. And hopefully, uh, increasing the pipeline of educators in that field going forward, potentially in, um, creating, generating interest in potentially becoming teachers at the level of the year, or teachers that are touched by the people. Again, all of that is going to be less expensive than the point six that you're using last year. So, I appreciate once again allowing the latitude. I am a hundred percent confident we would have lost that education if we did need to wait several weeks to access the benefit. Of the benefit that you have offered to us. I assure you, we will not update that, but that, that's the update on that. The, uh, next is actually a really interesting thing. We have been able to, or I should say, we, we, unfortunately, because of our budget constraints last year, we had to pass on the addition of a comfort dog. Working in one of our, 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 our. He was able to actually work with a veteran organization to get a comfort that we are working on getting fully certified as a therapy dog. Animal. Um, and working through our school committee policy that Frank Davidson chairs and, uh, for, um, therapy animals in schools. Middle school. This is gonna be a little bit different, actually, and we're not sure. We need to amend the policy a little bit. Our current policy allows for the therapy animals to be in a very restricted area. We are obviously hopeful that because officers that work with health schools will be able to bring them throughout the schools. There are lots of applications for this that we were very excited about. Not just for example, if we have critical expense in school, they provide comfort to students. But also for things like engaging with the younger students. A lot easier for officers or even less familiar with to engage with students. We've had students, we, we booked them to therapy animals before to increase their fluency. We're just really excited about the opportunity. Once we have this all buttoned up, I would love to have Aker Akerlen with the, the male dog come to the school committee meeting. I can tell you that in the short amount of time I was with Akerlen, it definitely, um, it had a significant impact on my mental capacity on that particular day. And I thought that we really needed a therapy dog in our houses as well. So I look forward to introducing you to Akerlen and working with, and having him join us.
Uh, I'm sorry, you kind of in and out a little bit. Did you say that, so the therapy dog is, is Officer Aker's dog?
Yes, Officer Aker was able to secure the dog through a veterans organization.
Okay.
As a veteran and a first responder, he was able to, um, get Akerlen. And his interest is using Akerlen to, uh, serve the students at the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is not an expense to, if that, if that was part of the question, I actually should have that. This is not an expense to this district, uh, operate.
Okay, thank you.
And as you heard at the budget subcommittee, Jackie, and maybe others I've heard from meetings of the, um, collect board, the town administrator is, even though the budget has been passed, we're looking for opportunities of positions that are not going to be filled. Not only because we know that it is going to be a very tight budget year, but because what we don't want to do, if at all possible, is add staff that we think are possible to be eliminated at the end of the school year. Again, that becomes all the liability for us because we pay unemployment because we are self-employed. It ends up costing us more than if we didn't have them in the first place. One example of that so far is a math position at a high school. So, uh, the staff has been notified of this, but, uh, I've worked with Mrs. Kavanaugh, spoke with Mrs. Kavanaugh, took in her work on this with the department chair. And, um, in case you hear about this, we wanted to make sure that you knew that the class sizes are gonna be in line with the other class sizes at the high school this year, approximately twenty-five students. What we don't wanna do is hire one that likely would be eliminated at the end of the school year. The unsuccessful bid could be, um, operational override. We know that we are gonna have some significant incidents at the end of this school year. And it is not in the best interest of the district to have that financial problem resolved. I will continue to report those to you as we introduce them. Where that funding will go to specifically, we aren't sure yet, because we may have an unanticipated need district with a fifty-three million dollar budget. That is, um, it's, it's not a huge percentage. Currently money, money, and we're very frugal with that money right now. But that could easily be picked up with, like, special education placement or very bad, um, opening of the year. So we will keep it posted on, on things like, uh, positions that aren't filling this year, in addition to positions that we will need. And, um, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Pruitt?
So, I know it's late, but there is information that I do need to share with you. Each year we do, we rely on federal funding through our entitlement grants. Um, as you know or may have heard, we were, the, this, each, each of the states were granted the Title I funding. Just recently, um, the Trump administration did release the rest of the, of the, um, grant funding, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. We have received those allocations now, uh, they were just provided to us. So I will put them in a chart for you so that you can see it, you can visually see it.
Thank you.
But the good news is that we do have an increase in Title I funding this year. We hover around the five percent mark for poverty. And unfortunately, that does not equate to the free and reduced lunch. Um, those that qualify for free and reduced lunch, that is a much higher rate than what, what is considered our poverty rate at the national level. When we drop below five percent, we were, we get, um, we lose a lot of federal funding. When we go over five percent, we increase that funding. This year, we have increased that funding. So we actually, this year for Title I, I'll read the numbers, but like I said, I'll put it in a chart and I'll email it to you. That funding is three hundred forty-six thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars, which is an increase of two hundred seven thousand six hundred forty-four. We use that funding to pay our interventionists. So that is really critical funding this year. Our title, no, go ahead.
Have we actually received that funding or just the allocation of now?
We draw the money down each month, so the state has the funding.
So it's there.
It is there, great. Our Title II funding, which provides professional development, it is also an increase. This year, we, we are receiving sixty-three thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars, which is an increase of fourteen thousand one hundred one dollars. Um, our Title III funding is used to support our multilabel learners. This year, we're receiving, um, eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty-two thousand, eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars, which is an increase of nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. Title IV, which supports our students, um, that are from marginalized populations, is decreased. So that is funded at ten thousand dollars, which is a negative of eleven thousand sixty-two dollars. So the overall for our entitlement grants increase is two hundred eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars. While we're very happy about that this year, it's extremely important to note that we do hover around the five percent mark. So with those increases, the next year, they could be decreases. So it's unfortunately not reliable, it's not sustainable. So I just wanted to note that to you, while it's a nice increase this year, especially during these times, it's not something that, this increase is not something we can rely on, um, next year. Um, and with that.
Sorry, just to add to that, because of that, it really prevents us from being able to apply that to, um, full-time positions. We have to be very cautious.
So, the other thing I just wanted to share with you is, we'll let you know, we did have our management conference this past week with our leadership team. We're very excited to start the year, despite, despite trying times. But the, the leadership team is ready to, you know, institute and support all of the great, great work that our teachers do, and we're really excited and looking forward to a great year.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. School committee notes, Colleen?
All right, so I have one. I went to the Human Rights Committee, um, meeting, I believe it was last Tuesday. And, um, they actually talked a lot about the block party that's coming up that we talked about earlier, so I won't bring that up again. But it does sound like a great time. Currently, there are ten people on the Human Rights Committee, and there are still three openings. So, um, one of those should be a student, so, um, I'm not exactly sure how all that works. So perhaps we can connect at some point and, um, work on that piece. There's also, um, a representative on Human Rights, Smitty, who is part of the DEI Parent Advisory Board through the district, so that is going to be me. So again, I have no idea what's going on with that, so I'll need to connect with you, um, for that piece as well. And then I know that the Human Rights Committee is also working on creating the holiday calendar for the district, which is wonderful. And just, if, if I may, I'm getting back to the, so that's all my notes. Getting back to the assistant principal piece, um, it's okay, I'd like to.
It's your notes.
Okay, all right, so my notes are, um, we budgeted, or the district budgeted for an assistant, a second assistant principal at the middle school level. And if we opt not to fill that position, I think we are doing a grave disservice to our students, our schools, and our families. That, the role of that assistant principal, I mean, let's take aside for a minute the importance of evaluation and coaching and mentoring our teachers. Let's put aside for a moment the importance of family engagement and having an administrator readily accessible to families. We'll, we'll put those pieces aside for a moment. With only one assistant principal, we are putting Easton Middle School at risk in terms of safety, climate, culture. We are exposing the district to a lot of liability. And I cannot think of one good reason why we would not fill that position.
Kelly?
Um, I have a couple of notes. So I did have the opportunity to attend, uh, the management conference, and I appreciate the invitation for that. The focus of the piece that the school committee attended was around the science of the positive. And I do, I will say, I found the conversation very powerful. I found the entire room very engaged and very excited about that. It was really wonderful to see everyone together talking about it. And just thinking about how to create a positive atmosphere for our students and for our staff. So I thought it was a, a very powerful set of conversations and really a great way to focus on, um, just focusing in on those positive moments, even when times are difficult. The other thing I just wanted to, to make as a general comment before I talk about the, the assistant principal piece, is, uh, just between now and the next school committee meeting, we have lots of kiddos that are starting in the district. Some new students, students who are moving into new buildings. And we have some new staff joining us, we have some staff returning. Great number of staff returning. It is a little bit different year, I know, than many folks faced last year with just larger class sizes and what have you. But I am very excited for the start of this new school year. I, um, I know kids, some kids are egging in their schedules, some just got their teachers, then are very excited about that. But the start of the new school year to me is always just sort of a fresh time period. I think of it even more so probably as a parent than I do even, like, New Year's. It's like a whole new set of things happening. So, um, I'm excited for all of them. I'm sure some kids are nervous, um, maybe some staff is nervous if they're new. But I think it's an incredible district. And so I'm very excited for everyone to come back, to restart, to have that fresh start. And I do think positive is an important mindset to go into the year, assuming positive intent on all parties. And positive attitudes for all the kiddos. And hopefully we don't have ninety degrees start day. So we'll see. We'll walk around right now. On the assistant principal, I, you know, I believe I've shared comments before, I will just say them more officially. I believe strongly that having the two of I will just say them more officially. I believe strongly that having the two assistant principals did have a positive impact on our kiddos. I do think it is important. I do think the role is important. I support it when we are creating it. I will also say that we have been very clear that we are facing a very, very tough budget coming up. And while I do think we funded it this year, and it is a critical role to be able to provide this year, I am incredibly concerned about any contract that would have us committing to that in future years. In prior times, I have said that I was worried about the federal funding. I feel greatly relieved that we do not have a federal funding issue. And so obviously, I would support having the role in place this year. I am very concerned about anything that has us continuing it in future years, just because we have an incredible number of tough cuts that could be ahead of us in future years. And so I know nothing, I'm aware the candidates came through. I did not meet any of them. This has nothing to do with, and the value of any administrator, please, for all administrators listening, I think you're all incredible. You're important and valuable. I am very concerned about what's ahead of us if we have to take that horrible budget option. So that is my position, is that I am very concerned about that. With that, while we have the funding and the ability to provide support for another year, I certainly support that. And I think the role is important, and the administrators are important.
Thank you. Lauren?
I will say that I also attended the management conference. It was a, it was, it was wonderful for me to be there. The presentation on the power of the positive will stay with me for a really long time. I talked about it all night long with my husband and gave him examples of our own lives, of how we need to focus more on the positive things than the negative things. And that is, that becomes the trajectory of your life if you focus on the negative. So I thank you for the invitation. And it was an absolute privilege for me to be there. And I appreciate it. I also, along with Jim and the Municipal Building Committee, toured the site of the Depot Street Public Works project. It's, excuse me, it is amazing what they've done already that you cannot see from the street, and how far back it goes, and what they've had to, quite frankly, clean up. It was a mess. And there was so much trash back there that they, it's going to be a really, from when we toured it to what it looks like now, has been so much progress. So I'm excited to see the progress as it happens and tour it again. I will also say that someone very wise said to me last week that August feels like the scary Sundays, Sunday scaries. And it's so true, the whole month of August. So I am, like Kelly said, I'm, as a parent, very excited for the school year and for, I feel like it's new beginnings. It's a chance to, for a child to hopefully sort of reinvent themselves each year as they grow, and have new teachers and new experiences and new friends in their classes and new, learning new skills, et cetera. So there's that. I will also say, if I could take every word that Colleen said about the assistant principal and restate it, I could, I would, but I cannot, because she did it so eloquently. And it was exactly how my words would have been if I could pull them out of my head. But I can't do that. But I 100% support your professional opinions and your experiences that I don't have. So I have to trust all of you that you know what you're talking about, and I do. I've heard no, that I can think of, and I apologize if anyone has ever said to us of why we, besides the budget, why an assistant principal is not needed. Then I'd love to hear it, because I only hear the reasons why there is one that is needed. And to hear it from Mr. Carroll and hear it from Mr. Crossman is like that, it's like saying that your workload is not important and you need to do more. So, and that's just not, I, I'll stop talking now because I'm rambling. But, but yeah, I, if I could take what Colleen said, because clearly I tried to say more and I couldn't, it's not coming out right. So.
You did great.
So.
It's a little late.
It's late. Okay, thank you.
Jim, school committee notes?
Really just one, maybe two. Mr. Crossman said it earlier, but congrats to the Easton team that went to the World Series. I think that's really cool. Credit also, for what it's worth, to the parents. I think that's a really positive use of social media to see that. Otherwise, I really have no idea that's happening, if you don't check Facebook for better or worse. The Municipal Building Committee, it was great to tour the facilities with Lauren and the project team working to build the new facilities for the DPW and the public safety departments. I was also on the Climate Action Plan Advisory Group, I think is the formal name. So that was a very interesting night. Really got to provide some feedback on the environmental sustainability of Easton. Maybe a few more meetings. I'll admit, I don't know all the intricate details. I do know a final proposal has to go to the Select Board, I believe, to vote on goals for Easton's climate plans. So that was just informative and eye-opening for me.
There is concern about the car, the traffic flow, right?
Oh, yes. I think there was a proposal to try to set up carpooling, which.
To where?
For the schools. I think it was considered high effort, low benefit.
Right.
So I don't think they're going to really move forward with that.
Isn't that called a bus?
Yeah, it's like Uber inventing a bus. Yeah. Yeah. And I think that's, that's it for me. My position on the assistant principal has not changed since we previously talked about it on July 16th. And I would prefer that to be on the agenda moving forward.
We can definitely put that on the agenda.
If we're expected to have comments or talk.
So I'm just going to say a couple of things because I've heard my voice quite a bit tonight. I'm just really thankful to the Tricentennial Committee members who have done just an incredible job planning all of these events, fundraising for the town. It's just, it's been really incredible, and I appreciate all the time and effort they put into it. I want to thank Mr. Davidson and Mr. Crossman for speaking tonight. It was good to hear from both of you as well. I want to thank my committee members for putting up with another very long meeting. I appreciate the amount of materials you had to go through tonight. It was extraordinary, and I appreciate that. As for the assistant principal position, I think we can have a more, a better discussion. We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting if members would like, and we could have a more comprehensive discussion. I appreciate the administrators' viewpoints on this. I have no idea what it's like to be an administrator in a school district. So I feel like I put my trust in their opinions. And so I appreciate that. And I would support the role based on their comments as well and our colleagues' comments as an administrator in another district. So with all of that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
First, you have a second.
All in favor? Great. Good night, all.
Good night and good luck.